Good evening, folks, and welcome to the May ninth, 2022 Select Board meeting. This is a first meeting after our town's election. I'd like to welcome aboard our new members, Mark Rambocker and Gary Wilson. I'd also like to thank Joe Knox and Paul Glavie for their years of public service to our town. It was an honor and a pleasure to serve with them, and I look forward to working with both Mark and Gary. At this point, as we do for all meetings, I'd like to start with standing and having our clerk lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a little. So as we do after every town election, we reorganize the board, and we nominate and elect a chair, vice chair, and a clerk. And I will say that it's been, again, an honor and a pleasure to serve the town in the board in the capacity as chair for the past year, and I look forward to helping and supporting whoever becomes chair for the upcoming year. So at this time, I would offer up processes to receive nominations for, first, the chair, and then the chair will be handed over if that's the pleasure of the board, and then we will change the seat, and then the new chair will continue the meeting for the rest of the year.
Musical chairs?
Perhaps musical chairs, absolutely. Yes, when the music stops, everybody grab a seat.
We were talking about singing earlier.
A little duet. Matthew and I are going to do a duet before we do this. So any nominations at this time?
Sure, I'll start off, if you don't mind.
Yeah, I don't mind.
Sure. So I'd like to nominate Matthew Nordhaus as chair of the Select Board.
I'll second.
Okay, nomination made and seconded, accept?
Yes.
Okay, any discussion or any other nominations? Are we good? Take a vote.
Great choice.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
All right.
Welcome aboard. Want to switch your slide?
Yeah, let's. Switch your name plates.
We were going to play that musical chairs.
Thank you. Here, I'm grabbing my stuff. There we go. It's yours. This is yours. Sweet, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, this is exciting. All right, it's my first official act. I'll ask for nomination for vice chair.
Yep, I'm just going to keep going.
Please.
I'd like to nominate Gary Wilson as vice chair of the Littleton Select Board.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, great.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I don't have to move.
You're my left-hand man.
Perfect.
You have to take a lap around your chair.
Do you want to?
Do you want to keep going?
Sure, right on the table.
Excellent, thank you. So I'd like to nominate Chuck DeCoste as clerk of the Littleton Select Board.
Okay, I was, I would like to nominate Mark, actually, because I thought he's been, yes, you've been clerk more recently than he has, and we were going to rotate through. That was my thinking, but I don't actually have a, you know.
There was a nomination on the table, so you have to see if there's any seconds.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just for good form, yep.
So, yeah, do we have a second on that?
For Mr. DeCoste?
Yeah, for Mr. DeCoste.
Yeah, I'll second for Mr. DeCoste.
Okay.
As a clerk.
Discussion? Mark, do you have anything to add?
I don't care one way or another.
Oh, okay.
Happy to be here.
Okay.
I'm happy to serve at the Boyd's.
It doesn't matter to me.
Okay, very well. So I guess there's a motion and a second. Let's vote on, vote on a clerk?
Yes.
All those who signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Congratulations.
I get to read a lot.
Yes, you do.
To read a lot.
Thank you.
All right. Excellent, so here we go. I wanted to start, actually, by discussing the situation with the council on aging. I was the liaison to the council on aging. I didn't attend today because both Gary and Mark are members. It would be a quorum. I thought that was probably a bad idea without posting. And so I actually want to ask you how we should handle this. I obviously can step back, and we can appoint one of the other two members of the Select Board to be the liaison to the COA.
So I have that in for your next board meeting?
Okay, very good.
All the Select Board appointments before we get into appointing the remainder members from the community.
Sounds great.
So we can put that in for the next meeting.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. And then I also want to thank the town clerk and all the volunteers for a smooth town meeting and an election. I know it's a lot of work, and I want everyone to know that we appreciate the time that they've spent. Okay, department and board updates.
Do you have any mail?
Oh, I'm sorry, that's right, mail. My bad.
Just to help you out, Mr. G. Normally, at this point, we go through the whole agenda, let the public know what we're going through.
Oh, that's right.
Then you turn it back over to me.
I forgot that you had not done that, so.
No worries.
All right, here we go.
That's on me.
Let's read through the agenda. We are going to read the mail. We have proclamation. This is May 2022 is Mental Health Awareness Month. Elder in Human Services donations, approval of the Memorial Day Parade, and the approval of the 2023 Pavement Management Plan from the DPW. Then we'll have public input and members' updates. Following that, we will have a licensing change for Anthony's coal-fired pizza for the all-alcohol restaurant license. Two interviews with the respondents to the RFP for 12 Robinson Road, Classic Construction and Joseph Cataldo. We are going to discuss the Select Board meeting schedule, the Select Board goal-setting process, and retreat, and then we'll schedule a review of the Select Board policies and regulations. Then we will have the Town Administrator update, memorandum of agreement for the Highway Department, Nogahill Orchard RFP update, the update on Nine Air Road, soil removal permit, the review of the final job descriptions for the health nurse and the health coordinator, followed by an update on the Mass Works Grant Program application, and a discussion of the appointment of Assistant Town Treasurer/Collector/Payroll Manager. And then finally, we have the minutes from April 25, 2022, with a scheduled adjournment of 8:35 p.m.
Yes.
Thank you.
Perfect.
All right, let's begin with mail.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have three items tonight to talk about that I want to bring out. First one is we received an email from Katie Bonner, who's the president of the Littleton Robotics and STEM Education Foundation, telling us what a great season that they had at the 2022 National Championships. So again, another well-done year by the robotics team. Second one is we received a proclamation from the Commonwealth that this is Building Safety Month, so Commissioner is here, and he, I think.
Did you receive the award? Not the award, the proclamation?
We did.
Yeah, so it's Ed's month and his team. So, and then the last thing is I just want to remind everybody about the Littleton Conservation Trust 60th Anniversary Picnic, which is this Saturday from 12 to 3:00. There is a number of fun things that they have planned. They also have a commemorative tee, which we grabbed the image of that that you can get. So for more information, go to their website, littletonconservation.org, trust.org/events, backslash events. The last thing before we move on is this is the last meeting where Joe is going to be with us as the assistant, so I just want to publicly thank him for everything he's done. I know it was tough shoes that he had to fill for the first Assistant Town Administrator, but Joe, he far surpassed, I think, what I was doing, so he's done a tremendous job. He's totally ready for the next level, and he always knows that I'm going to be here for him, to support him in any way. He'll be missed. It's Littleton's losses, certainly Upton's gains, so I just want to say thank you, Joe, for everything you've done. You've been a pleasure to work with.
Thank you. Thank you very much. It's been an interesting couple of years, and thank you for all the things that you've done that have been above and beyond your normal job description. I appreciate it. Thank you, Matthew. You're welcome. All right, should we go to department board updates?
First thing, we have that proclamation declaring May 2022 is Mental Health Awareness Month in Littleton. So we have a citation. Chuck, may I have that read?
Now you can. I got it right here. All right. Okay, a proclamation, "Whereas Massachusetts is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and economic value of the homes, buildings, and infrastructure that serves our citizens, both in everyday life and in times of natural disaster."
Sorry, that's the building, that's the building one.
It's proclamation.
We're looking at the mental health.
This clerk thing is not easy, you know.
It's not, really. Clearly, we must have picked a hot job.
Good job! Way to go, Ed. Nice job, Ed. Just wanted to give a quick, quick little shout-out for Ed there.
Let me vote again.
All right, now all attention goes to Liz, please, and her group. Proclamation, recognition, May 2022 as Littleton Mental Health Awareness Month. Am I on the right one? Whereas, mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas, mental illness is real and prevalent in our nation, and half of us will have a mental health diagnosis at some point in our lives. And whereas, all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives, it should feel comfortable in seeking help and support to manage these times. And whereas, engaging in prevention, early identification, and early intervention are as effective ways to reduce the burden of mental illness as they are to reduce the burden of other chronic conditions. And whereas, there is a strong body of research that identifies behavioral risks and supports specific tools that all Americans can use to protect their health and well-being. And whereas, with effective treatment before stage four, all individuals with mental illness, even serious mental illness, can make progress toward recovery and lead full, productive lives. And whereas, jails and prisons have often become the default places of custodial care for even nonviolent people with serious mental illness. And whereas, each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen has a responsibility to promote mental health and well-being for all. Now, therefore, we, the Littleton Select Board, do hereby proclaim May 2022 as Mental Health Awareness Month in Littleton, and call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in Littleton to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health. Approved this ninth day of May 2022, making assumption there, Littleton Select Board.
Thank you.
Without further discussion, I'll make a motion that we.
Yeah, please, please go. I mean, unless there's discussion, will you make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
Second item we have is a donation. Elder in Human Services, Liz is here to pass the donation up $748.59, be accepted.
Hello, good evening. I'm here tonight with a donation from Kristen M. Grimes in the amount of $748.59 for the purpose of supplementing the TRED fund for tax relief for the elderly and disabled. So I respectfully request that this donation be approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any discussion? You ready to make a motion?
I am. Elder in Human Services, that's not the motion. Move the Select Board vote pursuant to Master and Law Chapter 44, Section 53(a) and per its policy on solicitation acceptance of monetary and non-monetary gifts for public purposes to accept donations to the Department of Elder and Human Services, EHS, EHS COA, in the amount of $74, $748, $748.59 from Kristen M. Grimes for the TRED fund.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Liz.
Thanks, Kristen. For Cindy, Matthew, and Chuck, at the last meeting, there was an additional donation that we didn't have you sign, so I'm just going to pass this along for the three of you to sign.
Thanks. All right.
Here's John.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having me, and congratulations to those two new members for winning.
Do you wouldn't mind identifying yourself, please?
I'm sorry, John Borowski, Veterans Agent in town. Just want to ask permission for the Memorial Day Parade, as we normally have. We're going back to the normal parade route, starting at Donaldland's parking lot, which I graciously got permission to use from the new owner, which was nice and very helpful with that. So we'll continue on along up to the common and then to the old buried grounds, to the Shattuck Street, the one more, one more alley, and then to the fire station for a little break, and then the historical society for the Civil War Revolutionary War, Black Cast there under that, and Beaver Brook, and then on up to the cemetery for the ceremony of the day. And I also would ask that if one of the select would like to make a speech, that's fine with me, too. Just let me know what it is, I can put it out on the schedule.
Great, thank you very much. Yeah, I figured it was the chair, so. I usually march as a scout leader, but now I guess I've gotten promoted.
For a different hat.
Anybody have any discussion on this motion or on this request? And if not, I'll take a motion to accept it.
Move the Select Board, hold on, I'm not the same. Move the Select Board vote to approve the Veterans Agent's request for a Memorial Day Parade on May 30, 2022.
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll see you on the 30th.
Let's get some good weather.
Yeah, right.
It's conditional on weather?
No.
Never.
Next item, Mr. Chair, is the, Steve Yanley is here to present the Summer 2022 Pavement Management Plan.
Hi, welcome.
Good evening, Stephen Yanley, Director of Public Works. I'll just, I put together this quick PowerPoint, I'll kind of blow through it here and then answer any questions if there are any. Kind of this first round of work, I'm looking at three different treatments in town. Crack sealing, which is kind of a standard program, a cape seal, which is sort of a two-step process, kind of a preventative type of thing, and then your more traditional mill and overlay. What you see in front of you here is the list of streets for crack sealing based off the pavement management plan that was done in 2021. There's nine or 10 roads on there, varying widths and lengths, and usually with the crack sealing, and if you go to the next one, that's typically what you see. It says roads begin that kind of first stage of deterioration, they're developing some cracks. We can come through with this heavy-grade polymer sealer that'll seal up the cracks. It buys you generally two or three years before you see any other deficiencies in the roadway. Good, real good preventative measure for roads that are probably five, six years old, maybe just starting to maybe split along a seam, or, you know, something along those lines, preventing that top layer of delamination in the pavement. The second treatment is a cape seal. Here you see the four streets that came up in the pavement management program to be accelerated for this. This is more of a two-step process. First step is like a chip seal. It's kind of an emulsion-based sealer that's put on the street with then like a 3/8-inch chip stone that's dumped in there. That stays for about one to two weeks, gets swept, so any loose rocks that come off get swept up, and then there's like a 3/8 to 1/2-inch kind of liquid asphalt that's placed over the top. The past couple of years, from what I can gather, it looks like that was done in a number of different neighborhoods here in town, up off of Great Road, kind of the Snow Drive neighborhood, and across the way to Picket Lane, and then a few streets, Orchid Dahlia off of Goldsmith. Similar types of treatment were done, if you're looking for an example. This here tends to give you a road that's starting to deform a little bit, has maybe some patching, utility cuts. This will buy you another nine to 10 years on the lifespan of that road, relatively inexpensive in the grand scheme of things as far as pavement goes. And then the third thing is a more traditional, what you see, mill and overlay. You know, the grinder will come through, mill off inch and a half to two inches of asphalt, then we'll adjust some castings, manholes, catch basins, that type of thing. In case we grind through anywhere, we'll excavate that, or put in, repair the base layer of pavement, and then a finish course of another inch and a half, two inches will be placed over that. And then after that settles out a little bit, the oils work out. If the particular road had double yellows, fog lines, line striping, if you will, that'll come in later. So those are the three treatments I'm looking at. Here I put together some estimated costs. Obviously, if you're aware of gas and diesel fuel prices, it's, I'm kind of going off of what other communities got in some current DOT pricing, which is generally a couple of months behind, where diesel fuel a couple of months ago was under $5, now it's $639, $629. And then obviously with Chapter 90 work, which is the state funding, there's fuel escalators built into all those contracts, so, you know, I'm kind of, I put in, in my estimate, I put in a 15% contingency was generally a little bit on the high end, but I'm trying to overbudget a little bit. By the time I get this advertised on the street and we get into contracts, I'm going to be end of June, early July, so I don't know, you know, I'm kind of guessing on what the fuel will be at that point. Some of the larger current projects that are ongoing, there's a couple of different projects on Foster Street. One is in the Mass DOT's tip program that's over by the train station. Those plans are nearing 100% design, so when we get to the 100%, then it goes through the Right-Away Bureau of Mass DOT. With that, any easements will be, need to be secured, either by donation or I have to get appraisals through the process. Sometimes people will want to be paid, but the hope is we can get some donations so it doesn't cost anymore. The other end of Foster Street, down by Tehadawahn, is a similar type of project, but that's a project that's going to be locally funded. That's also approaching sort of the 100% design, and then I'll get some construction estimates on that. Again, that's going to be locally funded, so then we'll just have to figure out some avenues on how to fund that. Russell Street, that project was started, it's from King Street to the 495 Bridge. That project was started, it's kind of at a, almost like a 10%, which is a little bit better than a concept-level design. I'm trying to see if I can accelerate that a little bit to coincide with the sewer construction that's going to be coming in the next couple of years, you know, let them do all the utility work. They're going to do water main replacement as well as a new sewer line. Then maybe we can come in, rebuild the sidewalk, so I'm trying to get that, get the timing aligned on that. Just an update on the next one, which is the signal at the end of Bruce Street at Air Road and Willow Road. That's solely a Mass DOT project, no real local involvement, but that's supposed to be going out to bid, the full intersection reconstruction over the summer. The hope is maybe springtime construction on that, from the sounds of it. The next one is the Taylor Street sidewalk, which I believe the funding was given by Amazon. That, we're in the permitting process with DOT at this point. Had a little back and forth with them. They want to charge us for the permit to build sidewalk on their road, but anyway, you know, we'll work our way through that. The design's pretty much done. Hopefully, we're going out to bid with that project within the next couple of months, maybe for late summer/fall construction. The Beaver Brook-Great Road intersection, we're setting up a kind of pre-25% design hearing with Mass DOT in the next couple of weeks, with the hope that that'll get to 25% design later on this year. And if, for those that don't know, that's the proposal for a roundabout at that intersection.
Steve, can I just jump in real quick here?
Absolutely.
Yeah. On the Beaver Brook, I mean, all these projects, I think, may require some level of communication. We learned with, with something on the Shattuck Street, some of the neighbors were a little concerned that they weren't in the loop, so just want to be mindful of letting neighbors know, and something like the Beaver Brook project is going to be a pretty significant traffic mitigation.
Yep.
So just maybe we start thinking about doing some sort of a public session where we have folks, whether they come to the high school or the middle school cafeterias, stuff like that, just to, you know, once you get some sort of design that is presentable, to say, this is what we anticipate, this is how long construction will take, just to keep people in loops so that we do communicate.
Yep, so let me step back a little bit with the Russell Street one. There's sort of a, was an idea of having a meeting on that one. I know the Water Department just had a meeting in regards to sewer with the neighborhood there. There was also discussion about having a meeting with the road reconstruction. The Beaver Brook, when that's also in Mass DOT's tip program, so when the 25% design hits, there'll be a design public hearing run by DOT with the consultants basically informing everyone what it is. So that's already almost prescheduled because of the program it's in. Foster Street, at least the tip end of it, would have already gone through that part of the process, and I don't know if the other end has had a public meeting or not. I can certainly follow up on that.
Thanks.
Yeah, no, no problem. The Harwood sidewalk, that was something that we got notified, Anthony got notified maybe a month ago, that there was some earmark funding requested by the board, or someone on the board, whoever would have been here some years ago, it might have been you, I think. It's funny, 20 minutes ago, we got the contract back from the gentleman at the state, so we're going to chase some signatures on that tomorrow. The hope is that the $100,000 earmark in the budget, state budget, will at least fund full survey design, so we'll have a shovel-ready project, that then maybe we can spin into other funding, either complete streets funding, or we use a combination of local funding, Chapter 90 funding, but we'll have a shovel-ready project anyway. The unfortunate thing with the earmarks is I got six weeks to spend the money, but we'll figure it out. And then last on here is in the fall. Once I get through kind of this first round of paving this year on the other projects, to do an update to the pavement management plan, it's good to do it every couple of years. Municipality I came from, we ran it in-house, so this is a little different, we're contracting it out, about 17, 18 grand every time you do it, but that's Chapter 90 funding eligible. And then the final slide is just some kind of spots where we have funding. We have existing Chapter 90. We have new Chapter 90 coming at the turn of the fiscal year. This year, the governor funded what used to be called pothole money, if you remember back when, I think it was the Val Patrick's last year, he released the final 100 million. Then when Governor Baker came in, he released the extra 100. If you're familiar with the Chapter 90 process, I won't go, I could talk all day on that. But they call it the RAP, the Winter Recovery Assistance Program. The funding has to be used for Chapter 90-eligible projects, but we don't have to go through all the project submittals and all that, we just have to submit bills, and that has to be spent within the fiscal year. And then again, we get, we're fortunate enough to have the more than 700,000 local funding to help fund these projects. And again, like I say, this is kind of my first pass coming through the pavement management program that my predecessor Chris had worked with Green International, put together, kind of grabbing it here. I hope to come back later in the summer for some more work in the fall, update the plan in the fall and the winter, and then have a better jump on it early next year, so I'm not coming May. I want to already be in doing some work this time next year.
Thank you.
Sure.
Does the board have any questions or comments?
I have one question. In your proposals for summer spending, it was about 600,000, but this, the funding sources is like 1.4? So what's the, where's the delta for that? Are you saving money for future projects, or is it part of that other list?
So, sort of as you're saying, I want to come back with more work in the fall, and then those larger-scale projects, I'm still really honing in on how much money I need to kind of squirrel away to continue pushing those projects forward, the Lattalay Foster Streets, things like that, so I don't want to commit money and then have those projects go on a shelf until I can get more money. So then, you know, if I come back in the fall, I do a pavement management plan update in the fall, and then I can come back early in the spring with something else like this and hit the ground running, you know, the end of April. So planning on that money through the fiscal year, yeah, it looks like I have a lot now, but trust me, I'll spend it quite. but trust me, I'll spend it quick.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I have a couple of quick questions. One is, given that the paving cost has increased, did you reduce the amount that you're gonna do on the paving maintenance, or did you increase the budget this year compared to last year?
So the budget was pretty much already put together when I started, so I didn't have an opportunity, trust me, I'll ask for as much money as I can get. What I'm gonna try to do is a little, try to, it's a balance, you know? The trick with a pavement management plan is to keep your good roads good, and then you kind of slowly, the bad ones are bad, but you want to kind of, you don't want to just leave them bad, so you have to do some of those, but you've got to keep your good ones good. If you're familiar with the pavement management plan, again, I could talk for hours, with how they rate the roads and things like that, it's a balance, you know? So trying to do the three different types of treatments, some roads need a full mill and overlay, they're full of real potholes, utility cuts, they're out of shape, ponding, so you want to reconstruct those. Some still have good shape, they might have some cracks, some delamination, so then you can get away with kind of that middle treatment, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So it's a balance, and that's, you know, again, you bring the professionals in, I have a lot of experience at it myself, so we get a, we get a good plan, and then when we redo it in the fall, you know, I can do a five-year and then maybe a 10-year projection.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
And then on the Beaver Brook roundabout, I know that we had to pay the 25% design?
Correct.
Is that at all gonna be impacted by the rise in prices? Is it related to the total cost of the project in any way?
No, that's the design, it's a total of seven.
Thank you very much.
Sure, you're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, I guess.
Yes.
So, Steve, nothing that's on your plan right now, but it's more of an update to the public relative to Air Road from King Street to Spec Pond.
Sure.
Where the water main was changed.
Yeah.
Which will be paved here pretty soon, right?
Yep, I should have, I probably should have included that on the slide. We've been meeting a lot with the water district. They're, all the water main work that they did over the past couple of years, they're tentatively scheduled for two weeks to begin, they're gonna start on Spec Pond, which end of the street is still up for discussion, I think, if it's the Hartwell end or the Air Road end, but then they're gonna be in town and they're gonna be redoing the trench on Air Road. Basically, full reconstruction on Spec Pond, trench paved on Hartwell, I worked a little deal on Sanderson and Taylor Street with them, and then we're looking at some different options on the King Street extension at this point.
Okay.
Great.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We'll have public input in just a minute.
Oh, I have a question for him.
We'll have public, okay, well, we're gonna do public input in just a second. Thank you very much. And now we will move on to public input and members' updates. Oh, I'm sorry, do we have a motion? Oh, we do, my bad. Unless there's any other discussion, we'll take a motion to approve the pavement plan.
Move the select board vote to approve the FY 2023 pavement management plan.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous, thank you. All right, let's move on to public input. If anybody would like to speak to the board, please step up to the podium and make sure that, and please let us know your name and address.
Linda Stein, 81 New Estate Road.
Thank you.
I have a question for the road manager. The road to the dump, part of it on the air side is in terrible shape, and I don't know if that was in your plan or is in your plan, but, you know, I use that all the time to go to the dump, and it's horrific.
So I believe that he spoke about that. The last thing he said was talking about the
Air Road.
Air Road repaving, which includes
Well, it's not Air Road.
No, no, which includes part of Spec Pond.
Okay.
And he did discuss that, am I correct in that?
All of Spec Pond.
All of Spec Pond?
Just a matter of where he's gonna start.
Oh, great.
Where the contract is gonna start.
Okay. Any other public input, Mr. Sanders?
George Sanders, 672 Great Road. Mr. Chairman, I would like for the DPW to call the state and have somebody come out and take a view of the trees, the dead trees that's on 119. Fencing after you go across Beaver Brook there, on the left-hand side going west, a lot of dead trees there, there's one on Embankment out there, Springdale Farm, it's a pine, I don't know which way it's gonna go, it is super dead, and there's more dead trees in that area come back, so some of it's state and probably some of it belong to individuals, but with this wind blowing like it is now, somebody driving along at night, I mean, a tree can just come over, boom, you know, can kill somebody, so we should get these dead trees off the side of the road.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any public comments? All right, board member updates, Ms. Napoli?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I just wanted to echo the comments made earlier at the beginning of the meeting by select board member Decost regarding Paul Glavy and Joseph Knox. I had the pleasure of serving on the board with them for five years, this would have been our sixth year together, but I just really wanted to thank them for their service. They collectively have served the town of Littleton for over 30 years as members of this board, and that is a degree of dedication and commitment to our community that I think should be acknowledged. They've done so much for our town in one way or another, that we're very fortunate to have had them sitting here on this board and serving our town for so long, so I just wanted to just acknowledge that and say thank you to them.
Thank you.
The other thing I wanted to talk about is the Orchard House, and I believe that that's gonna come up, in Agock Hill Orchard, maybe during Town Administrator, Assistant Town Administrator update, so we can talk about it at that time, and I just had some comments about the meeting calendar too, so we'll talk about it when that comes up.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Wilson?
Obviously not a lot, first time, I just thank the public for a pretty decent turnout on a very blustery day on Saturday, and I would echo, Ms. Napoli had stated about Paul and Joe and their commitment to the town for many years, and I will echo some statements I made, really, that I appreciate everything, all the knowledge they've passed on to me, and I've learned a lot from it, so just wanted to make sure the public recognized that too. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Decost?
I just want to follow up on something that was in the mail packet relative to the robotics team, I was speaking with Katie Bonner at the polls on Saturday, and Katie and Brett Connor, I'm sorry, Bonner, do a great deal to help that program and have been great stewards for that program, and I just, just a huge congratulations, and I asked that the chairman would have taken bringing them back in, probably after finals and SATs and ACTs and all that kind of stuff settle down, but I think it'd be good to have them come in, we've done it kind of like an annual basis, and I think if we could
Run their robot around in the room?
Run their robot around, and they're really prideful right now, and they had a lot of success, now they're, they're looking at all kinds of opportunities to compete in different venues and that kind of thing, so if anybody has, you can Google, I can't remember the name, the number of the team, but you can Google Littleton Robotics, and there's an opportunity for anybody to donate, and the community has been phenomenal, the business has been phenomenal, in helping to get these young robotics STEM learners to these competitions all over the country, so I encourage folks to make a donation to support those folks.
Thank you. Mr. Buggler?
I obviously don't have much either, I wanted to also thank Paul and Joe for all their service and let them know that I'm going to be leaning on them heavily, and I will say, it was freezing on Saturday at the polls, and I thank everyone for coming out, and it was really nice to actually see people that I don't think I've seen since the pandemic, so it was very nice to see the turnout and people there, so.
I was reminded that the day I ran was 92 degrees, and we were handing out popsicles and ice water, so go figure, it's New England, I guess.
I think we had ice water, we were just, it didn't start that way.
Yeah, right. Couple of things, one is the mental health proclamation made me, reminded me of a conversation we had at town meeting about how much elder and human services, and I think it's important to remember that it's human services, just how much they do for the town, and how many people they help, and how important that work is, and I think that the discussion of the senior center really has brought to light and exposed some of the tremendous work they do and how hard they work, and I just want to make sure that we acknowledge that, and it's one of the reasons I really want to support the senior center, is that they've been making do with frankly terrible, terrible conditions for a long time, and I really want to give them a beautiful place to spread their wings and do even better. The other one is something Mr. Decost mentioned, which is a communication with the citizens about, and specifically, this was about 31 Chaddock Street, but I realize that the weekly emails you send have a great summary of what's going on, and I'm wondering if it would be appropriate to make those public, either on the website, on the Facebook page, as a way of just letting people know in broad strokes, things that are going on in town, and we don't have, we can discuss it, you know, we don't have to decide now, but it was something that occurred to me, and I'm wondering how you think, what you think about that.
Yeah, perhaps we can discuss that during the retreat, because there is some stuff that's attorney-client privilege that I'm sharing and
Of course, yeah.
That we can't share, unfortunately, with the public, but I'm presenting it to you, so, but certainly we can, I think we can do something.
Yeah.
I'd love to wait till I have staff, I'm gonna, another week after this week, I'm gonna be, so it's certainly something, I know that Mark brought up, the TA blog, he liked that when Keith did it, and, you know, all of those are great ideas, and, you know, I'd love to get some of those going, I just ask for a little bit more patience with the timing.
Sure. And, okay, that's great, thank you. So the next item is item four, Anthony's Coal Fired Pizza, all alcohol restaurant license, change of management. Who do we have to speak to that today? Hello?
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board, Elizabeth Tizano from Optin, Connel, and Devlin. On behalf of Anthony's Coal Fired Pizza, with me tonight is Stephen Griffin, he is the proposed manager of record at the Littleton Restaurant. He is a Massachusetts resident, a U.S. citizen, and he's familiar with the rules and regulations relating to the sale of alcohol, and he is tip certified, he has 10-plus years in the food and hospitality industry, and he is a U.S. veteran, so he has plenty of experience, and he's excited to join you guys in Littleton.
Great, thank you. Hello, do you want to say a few words?
Hi, my name is Stephen, company moved me up here from Fort Lauderdale, Florida, to help out with our north region. Company has invested a lot of money this coming year, getting our north region back to the way it was, you know, before COVID. I was flying up here a bunch of times from Florida, weeks at a time, staying at the Marriott across the street, just to help because we were so short-staffed, that everything was going on with the pandemic and whatnot. Fell in love with the town. My corporate office asked me if I wanted to move up for a couple of years to help out. I said absolutely, so here I am.
Great, thank you very much. Does any, any of the board members have questions?
Not comfortable with the input that we got from our public safety folks.
All right, so I guess I'm ready for a motion.
Move the select board vote to approve the application of Anthony's Coal Fired Pizza of Littleton LLC, DBA Anthony's Coal Fired Pizza at 201 Constitution Ave., the point, for a change of manager from Michael Robert Helvitz to Stephen Griffin for its all alcohol restaurant license under Mass General Law, Chapter 138, Section 12.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and is there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Good luck, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item, oh, you need to switch.
Yeah.
Onto item number five, 12 Robinson Road, request RFP respondent interviews. Welcome, everyone who's here, and I will begin with classic construction. Good evening.
Good evening.
Michael Abraham, 60 Taylor Street, classic construction.
I'm Brian Gannon, Mike's partner, I'm from Littleton, 172 Foster Street, also property on Taylor Street.
Do you have a presentation, or do you want to just start on questions?
Our proposal's pretty simple, we just want to purchase the property, rehab it, back to its original condition as close as possible, turn it into our office, possibly, we'll probably move over there, rent our property on Taylor Street, use that property as our office. We only have three to four employees, no heavy equipment, we don't have any plans to expand, just to rehab. Obviously, we're a general contractor, we're certified with the state to do historical building renovations, we've completed at least 12 projects in the state, so we would love the opportunity to purchase this property, renovate it, and just keep it as is, maintain it, and that's pretty much it. We don't really have any giant plans for that.
Right.
Do you have a plan for the barn as well as the house? Would you use both of those buildings as your offices, do you know?
Maybe eventually we'd, you know, finish a portion of the barn, but for now, we'd just use it as, you know, just regular storage.
Yeah. Have you looked into whether you would require septic or anything like that in order to change it to an office?
Septic-wise, I think we'd probably have to go through the system and redo it.
And so, putting, like, waiting for town sewer and putting in a septic system, have you, have you thought about that?
Well, depending, we'd have to have somebody come out there, look at the septic system, you know, evaluate it and see if it's viable or not.
We didn't see the septic, just the town sewer being brought up that street, so we're not banking on that happening. I didn't see that, I started on Great Road, but I didn't see any provisions for going up Robinson Street.
Was, I didn't know if that was in the district or not, I can't remember.
It's the original spine.
Okay, that's okay, I'm just curious. Great. Any other questions?
I have a question, Mr. Chair, certainly hype, nice to meet you, thank you for your, submitting your proposal. So you have three to four employees, do you have clients that come to visit your offices?
No, we do all public construction.
Okay.
So everything's off-site.
Okay. We just had some inquiries from residents that live on Robinson Road concerning parking, for any perspective?
Yeah, I mean, generally, we have two to three cars there, and that's about it. We like to maybe get a fourth person, so we might have a fourth car, but the third car, fourth car would only be there like one day a week.
Okay.
For a key.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, that was kind of my, the same questions I was kind of leaning on, was the parking situation, and if there was any plans to manipulate the property that way for parking in a lot of that.
Not really, maybe just widen where it butts the barn, because it's kind of undefined there, it's all deteriorated.
Mr. Decost?
Yeah, so, only because you just brought it up, so your thought is that if you were going to do any parking in the rear, you'd go by the barn, or would you go to the left by the dentists?
I don't think we'd do any parking in the rear.
Okay. So you widen, you widen the driveway essentially?
Correct.
All right, all right. So it would widen towards the, or butter to the right, to the tree there?
I think the barn width should be sufficient, or right in front of the breezeway.
All right, so as far as equipment, would there be, other than inside the barn, would you be housing?
No.
Any construction?
No, we don't really have any.
Mr. Buggler?
Just to be clear, you're planning on keeping the basic floor plan of the structure as is?
Yes.
And just basically turning bedrooms and offices and things like that?
Correct.
Because some of the items that I think are in the deed restriction are like the ovens have to stay, and some beams have to stay, and you're okay, you have enough room outside of those restrictions?
Plenty.
For what you need, okay, very good. All right. And no changes at all to the outside, other than obviously making it nice?
Fixing it, yes.
Yeah, okay, great, thank you. Any other questions?
I didn't know if they wanted to just show us a couple of projects that have completed.
That was in Danvers Housing, and that was basically a two-family, and it had to be ADA compliant, so that was the ramp coming out of the rear.
That was a full gut remodel.
Right, there's some before pictures on that too, it was pretty deteriorated.
Was that a historical house?
It was, yeah.
And can you tell me a little bit about what getting, you said you were certified to do historical?
Yeah, we're DCAM certified to do historical restoration.
And what do you have to do in order to become certified for that?
You have to do five projects over $100,000, and get certified, you have to give them your resumes. It's basically like an Angie's List for the towns, you have to, you have to pass in grades, they evaluate all your prior customers, and they, you have to get recertified every year, they reevaluate three customers from that prior year, and they score you.
Okay, thank you.
So just, as we throw around a lot of acronyms, DCAM is Department of Capital and Asset Management?
Yeah, Division of Capital Asset. Yeah, Division of Capital Asset Management, and they threw another M on that, maintenance now.
Okay. Great.
Because they took over all of the maintenance of all the state entities.
But they're kind of the agency that gives report cards to?
Correct.
Library project.
Right. Any public money being spent has to, you have to be DCAM certified.
Excellent. Any other questions?
I'm just going to, so your address is Taylor Street right now, and that property is something that, something that you guys bought in the condition that it's in right now, or is something that you?
No, we renovated. It was in dismal shape.
Which one is it on Taylor Street?
It's a red, small, low-red building that connects to the green, large metal building.
If you go past Whitcomb Ave, on the left-hand side.
Okay.
Cataldo, I think it was.
The guy that's doing the tin.
From Wallfam?
Yeah.
Cardillo.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, that was in 1800, 1860s, 1850s?
Yeah, it's in 1860s-ish.
Totally dilapidated. We fixed it up, maintained it. If you ever drive by, you can see.
I'll go check it out.
It's in good shape.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Sure. Thank you.
Appreciate it. I think we're going to have some public questions and comments at the end, because I know that there are a lot of people who want to speak to this.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Cataldo?
Good evening, board members. Joe Cataldo, I live at the end of Robinson Road. My wife and I, Dale, have lived in Littleton for over 40 years. We renovated our own home on Robinson Road, and the barn at Cataldo Nurseries presently have purchased the property in Westford that we'll be talking about briefly this evening. With me, I have Melissa Robbins, who's a land use and permitting attorney that worked with us on our team in Westford, and Matt Waterman from Land Tech. And in the essence of time, Melissa speaks very quickly, so I'm going to have Melissa present our proposal and our plans, and then you can certainly ask any questions.
I'd better speak quickly now. So, good evening, members of the board, for the record. Attorney Melissa Robbins from the law firm of Farland Robbins. I did see the questions that were in your agenda this evening, so I've tried to incorporate them into my presentation, so I'll try to run through them quickly. But if I miss anything, I'm happy to answer any questions you have at the end. So the proposal that you have in front of you under the RFP is to build two units in the existing structure, and then build three new units in the rear of the property. I know that might seem like a high density for the rear of the property. We have gone back and forth with what the right number is back there, and perhaps it's a smaller number with bigger units. But right now, we're showing three. The reason why is we're trying to keep these as smaller units. Right now, they're proposed to be about 1,200 to 1,400 square feet. They have first-floor living, so they could be for 55 and over, somebody that's downsizing, or also a starter home. So we try to keep them right in about that area, try to fulfill, bring something new to the market, certainly needed in the town of Littleton. They will not be affordable, they will not be able to be counted on the town's inventory, but I will tell you, they'd be affordably priced for this market, just based on their size. Also, I just thought it was interesting to note that this would be the first new multifamily development in the Village Common Mixed-Use District. All other projects have been commercial, so this would be the first one coming in that would be new residential. You can see from the plans, and if you just go to maybe the front rendering for the new building, lots of time and attention has been spent in trying to incorporate the historical aspects of the existing structure, not only into the existing structure, but into the structures that we're going to build in the rear of the property. As Mr. Cataldo had noted, this team that you have in the RFP package is currently working on a project known as Hicks Farm at 124 Main Street in Westford, which is a house that was built in about 1746, and it's very similar to this project we're proposing here. We're proposing two units within that structure and two units outside of that structure. Mr. Cataldo has worked hand-in-hand with the Historic Commission in that town, with our architect, who's not here tonight, Jim Zagowitz from the MZO Group. He has made sure to maintain the historic aspects of that house, and also keep some features, much like what you're looking for in your RFP. At 124 Main Street, we kept the chimney, the central chimney, the fireplaces, the woods' wainscoting, the mantles, the corner posts, the beams, much of the original wide pine floors, and now also the ceiling, the tin ceiling, and the dining room is also being maintained. And that really was hand-in-hand with the Historical Commission, trying to keep some of the interior components in place. Many of the same things would be done within this development. I think one of the questions is, what would be your first focus? Our first focus would be stabilizing the structure. Most importantly, the breezeway and the barn are in pretty rough shape, so we'd go into stabilizing and reconstructing that breezeway area and the barn. The second would really be bringing the house to code. There were some questions about what we'd be adding on. And really, the biggest part of the addition would be putting a code-compliant staircase, which we would put in the rear of the property. And that's really for a secondary means of access to the second floor. It also gives us a little bit more room to move around up there. But we'll respect the historical features of the home all the way around. The final aspect really there is making sure that all of this design work we're doing with the existing house, we incorporate into whatever units we build in the rear, because that'll be important in bringing the project together. And you can see this is a proposed rendering of what those units could look like in the rear. We're showing them right now as one duplex and one single unit, standalone unit, but you can see from the architectural features, we're really trying to marry the two together. Our team is well-versed in historic renovations, which is evident, I think, from the resumes you have in the RFP packet. Mr. Zagowitz, who's not here tonight, is probably the most experienced. He's dealt with many historic reservations, preservation districts. He actually sat on the Westford Historic Commission, so we hired him for 124 Main Street and this project, knowing that it was going to be historic preservation. He really respects the process. Jim and this team has experience with the Federal Secretary of Interior Standards and Guidelines for Treatment of Property, and I think it's evident from the renderings that we'll work with the stakeholders to determine which, to what extent we use the components of that, of rules and regulation, which is really, you have to decide whether you're going to do preservation, rehabilitation, restoration, or reconstruction. And that will all be incorporated into this project. We'll also be using the Guidelines of Sustainability for rehabilitating historic buildings. That was one of the questions that was in your packet. We will be consulting that for guidance. Mr. Cataldo is not DCAM certified, but that's largely because he doesn't do state-funding projects, doesn't go out for RFP bids, of which he is the consultant, which he has to construct under that. So he's not DCAM certified for that reason. It's private funds that are used to construct this, and no state funds will be needed for this project. There was a question in the packet about how we propose to proceed with this project. Our proposal would be to fully renovate the house. That means new plumbing, new heating, new AC, new electrical, new fire alarms. The rear of the building, as I mentioned, would be added to add a code-compliant staircase, which would also allow for better circulation on that second floor, and a little bit more space on the second floor. That breezeway would be completely renovated to really try to keep the existing framing to the extent that we can, and we would use that area for living space, and that could be expanded into the barn area, which would also be used for living space. Full design plans have not been developed yet, but if selected, we would work on this with the guidance of the Historic Commission. But what we imagine at this point is that the left portion of the houses you're looking at, at the existing home, that would be used as one unit, and then the breezeway over to the barn would be the secondary unit. There was a question on, in the packet, about how we would maintain this through the Homeowners Association. I like to explain that it's really a belt-and-suspenders approach when you go through this. We would be seeking a special permit through this district. That would obviously have conditions in it that would require for the historical maintenance, so there'd be conditions of approval. There would also be a Homeowners Association, which is really the best police power around, is your neighbor telling you you're doing something wrong. So on top of the Homeowners Association, it would also be in the deed, and there would also be a historical preservation restriction. So really, there's multi-layers here of protection. You have the Homeowners Association, and then you also have the Building Commissioner that can police the conditions and institute a fine of $200 per incident per day if anything is ever done wrong on the project. We imagine that the construction of this project would take about 12 to 18 months to complete, once a shovel got in the ground. And we would imagine, since we're going through the planning board process and the rules are pretty clearly set out, that that process wouldn't take us all too long. I think that that's everything. Might have highlighted most of the questions in the packet, but what I'd like to do is just turn it over to Matthew Waterman from Land Tech, just to talk briefly about the civil site plan that you have in your packet.
Thank you. And for the record, Matt Waterman with Land Tech Consultants. Melissa went through most of the historic and the preservation. Well, I'll back up just a little, in the sense that when we were first analyzing this and how we'd develop, adding some units in the back, we went through the village overlay district, we went through the RFP, obviously, and then our experience, and we laid out the units in the back and how to access them. The driveway would be on the left-hand side of the building. We actually had a rendering where the driveway was on the right-hand side. We were trying to preserve a tree that's in, squished in between the two houses. But then there was just not enough room on the right-hand side. There's residential structures as you go right and further down Robinson Road. It's more commercial to the left and out in front, obviously. And so the driveway was shifted to the left. All the parking would be out behind the building. So the street view from both Great Road and Robinson Road, we'd be removing that driveway that's there today. There would be no access. There would be, you know, security man doors, you know, for pedestrian access, but there would be no formalized parking up front. With removing the driveway, we put in kind of a two-lane, kind of a, in going with the historic nature, and having that, maintaining that garage door, and whether that's a door or just a faux door to keep that historical aspect. We'd work with the Historic Commission on that. Screening, we started to develop and think about screening to the residential units to the right with Arbor Viti down the property line closest to the house, and then along the frontage for pedestrian access and movements, we'd be reconstructing the sidewalk to standards along the frontage of the property, and then providing a little pocket park out front. And there's a little rendering on the right with what we thought would be a good idea, which is just to be a small bench and maybe a historic plaque that could be placed up in the front of the yard for public access that might be able to describe Benjamin Kimball House in more detail. Utilities, we did look at that quickly. We were expecting that we'd be tying into town water. It is in the sewer district, but where the sewer district is kind of a fluid thing, and with the construction timelines, we do anticipate, or we'd be planning, if we were to move forward, to do some form of temporary, either septic, or depending on how far along the sewer district plans are, we could think of some other potential ways to do a temporary septic system. But parking, we do provide enough parking out in the back. There's two spaces per unit. The new units would each get a garage and a space in front of the garage, and then we have four surface spaces for the rehabilitated building, or the Benjamin Kimball House that would be out behind. I'd be happy to answer any questions. With that, I think we're done.
Thank you. So I was informed that the Historical Commission was invited. I'm sorry, I didn't realize that. In order to attend and interview the applicants, so I propose that we discuss the Cataldo proposal first, and then if there's questions about classic construction, we'll go back to that.
Sounds good.
So would anyone like to speak to, or ask questions of the Cataldo proposal?
I'd really like to hear the Historical Commission on all of this.
Okay.
This is definitely a
Sure.
Very, very differing
Two different, yeah.
Projects, sure.
Yeah.
We bought this some five years ago, five or six years ago at a town meeting, with the intention of buying it. Bought it for $250,000 at a town meeting. The intention was to buy it and then basically flip it. Whether we sold it for a dollar, as long as we could put that historical restriction on it. But there are, you know, there was a lot of thought about what we wanted to do, what use we might want to retain or put into that building. So certainly, the Historical Commission, and if there's anybody from cultural, or, you know, anybody from other town boards, I think it'd be important to hear.
I would invite anyone from the Historical Commission who'd like to discuss it, to step up.
Hi, Andrew Watt from the Littleton Historic Commission. So to the Cataldo proposal, I'm just wondering why you considered adding additional units in the back, and also how you were going to address the deed restriction and its inability to subdivide the property?
Mr. Chair, from a, yes. So the reason we added additional units in the back was really to offset some of the costs to do the historic preservation is expensive, but also to create a housing type that's needed in the town of Littleton. We were trying to figure out what we could do back there that maybe wasn't an affordable unit, but wasn't a different type of unit that the town could need. It's a nice nexus, really, between the single-family homes and the commercial area that's heading into, so it'd be a nice transition between that. So those were really some of the ideas we were thinking of when we did that. And the second part of the question was?
So with the deed restriction, you can't subdivide the lot?
Oh, yes.
So how would that work?
So this would actually all be one lot, and it would be done through a homeowners association, so no subdivision would be necessary whatsoever. These would be just like any other condominium development, where people would have exclusive use of their unit, and then everything else would be held as open space, which actually is what gives you more control over the entirety of the property. The outside of these structures would be put into the homeowners association.
Thank you.
And subject to the restriction.
Why don't you stay up there?
Oh, yeah.
Because I might have a question, too.
Please.
Also, Jonathan Liebowitz.
Could you come up, just so people at home can see you?
I forget about that. Yes, I understand. Yeah, Jonathan Liebowitz, also a member of the Historical Commission. We appreciate both of the submissions, and we're pleased, we're very pleased with both of them, and how much they work to keep the proposals in accord with the historic nature of the buildings and so forth. So thank you very much for doing that. My question is, you know, this is a little bit, I think, unusual to have a condo development like this, where you have two units of the condo in the historic building, and then three units, three units not. Do you have any experience with this being done elsewhere? And how do you, I mean, how do you make sure that the people who are not in the historic units see it in their interest to, you know, continue to pay for the maintenance of the historic unit, which after all, isn't, the sense is theirs, and the sense isn't theirs? I mean, that was the one thing that struck me, was, I mean, on the one hand, imaginative, and, you know, I, I mean, I think we, for historic preservation, I'm certainly one who believes in the need to be imaginative about a lot of these things, and I commend both of these proposals for that, for doing that. And then, but at the same time, does that, how do you know that's going to work? Thank you for your consideration.
So this actually is, Mr. Chair, is it okay if I respond?
Yes.
So it's generally not atypical that there's different types of unit styles within a condominium association. You set your fees based on values, and then there's rules and regulations. Some are set by the association, and they can change over time, but others are set by the permitting that you go into, and this would be one of those. That they would be rules and regulations that they're subject to, that'd be subject to their permit, and they would not be able to change them. We've successfully done this before. We actually rehabilitated an older home as part of Mannion Place, and the existing home was three units, and then there's units, brand-new units, that are around. So I won't tell you how old I am, but I was actually part of that project, so that was one of the first ones I ever worked on. Then we're doing it again in Westford. The two units will be, again, within the existing structure, and then there'll be two units that will be outside of the structure, and they just have to all follow the same rules and regulations. They'll pay a condo fee, and everything will have to be maintained in accordance with the rules and regulations. With the belt-and-suspenders approach I talked about, this one will actually have even another step above that, because you'll have the restriction in place. So not only will they have to be subject to their rules and regulations of their homeowners' association, they'll have to be subject to the rules of the special permit, and they will also have to be subject to the rules that's going to be set forth in that restriction. They'll be set by the Historic Commission and then accepted by this board.
Thank you. I have actually a related question to that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Can you, one of the, one of the, I've been speaking to some of the residents of Robinson Road. I think one of their concerns is how, how will the interior, you know, restrictions be, be enforced, given that obviously you can't drive by and look and see whether the brick oven is still being maintained for
Oh, sure. Well, those, although historical preservation restrictions do generally focus on the outside structure, you can put rules in place that keep certain things in place, like the central fireplaces or any beams. And you can set an inspection schedule, just like a building inspection, and the condo association would have to report accordingly to the commission on whatever basis that they say that they want to set forward, that these things are being properly maintained. Likewise, at some point, they're going to have to be maintenance. There's going to have to be maintenance and repair on these things going forward. They'd be subject to this historical preservation restriction, and you'd have to go through the commission for anything that you'd have to change out over time.
Great, thank you very much.
I just want to add to that, Mr. Chairman. So in our home, we have, I live in the original Robinson farmhouse, which is, we don't know the date, it's in the 1718 era. We pulled up all the pine floors that are in that house, shipped them up to a lumber mill in New Hampshire. They stripped them of all the paint, they put edges on them, they put tung oil on them, shipped them back to us, and those, there are manners in which you can maintain 100, 200-year-old wood. The, I spoke to Linda Stein about this. We would preserve the fireplaces. We do not have to meet the energy code because it's an existing, well, to some degree, to some degree.
I saw that, I saw that.
Mr. Mullen. According to Mr. Mullen, we don't need any windows. No. The beehive ovens would not be touched with respect to any dismailing or any of that. Jim Ziegowitz, Ed was good enough to let us in the house. We're able to go inside and look at the features that we needed to save within the guise of that list that we provided. The wood framing, the wood paneling that is around the fireplace, that's mustard-yellow color will come off, that will get stripped, that will get put back. It's, it's a very lengthy process, and Classic would say the same thing. It's very time-consuming, but it is very doable to preserve the existing features of the house within, within architectural reason. So I just have to say that.
So, but on the example of energy efficiency, you can find new windows that are, you know, double-glazed that fit with a, a proper historical appearance?
There are, there are windows manufactured that are accepted by the Boston Historical Commission, and you can utilize those, and they look almost identical to those windows that are existing in the home. There are those types of things. There are new materials available that, that can utilize, but still will keep the historic look of that house.
Thank you. Yes.
Linda Stein, Historical Commission. I want to echo what Jonathan said. I think both proposals respect, respect the historical character of, of the structure, and we appreciate that. I do have three questions that aren't all that historic-related. The neighbors have also expressed to us that they're concerned about parking. What if guests come? I mean, there is enough parking for the people who live there, but what about people who come to visit? If they have, if all these people have guests, where are they going to park? So that's a concern of the neighbors. And I guess, I may have to talk to one of the town lawyers about this, but the deed restriction itself will be on the historic structure. I don't know how that deed restriction affects the units in the back. So how do you enforce having them, you know, well, I guess what you're saying, they, they have to pay into it because it's part of the homeowners' association? Okay. And then the last question was following up on the septic and sewer issue. If the sewer takes a while, and Robin Strode is part of the sewer project, are you going to wait to, to work on the project, on the, on the existing structure until the sewer comes in? I know you mentioned a temporary, possibly temporary septic. I'm not sure, I don't know, but I'm not sure that there's enough space there for a septic system if you have three units in the back plus the main structure. So if that isn't viable, would you wait to restore the main house? Or would you go ahead and restore the main house while you're waiting to see if you could do septic or wait for the sewer?
Actually, could you hang on one second? I have a question for you. When you were talking about the units in the back, were you referring to the visual appearance and how that would be maintained?
No, I mean, their renditions were pretty good about that. I was more thinking about how do you make those people pay for the historic preservation of the main structure, which is the part, which is part of the deed
Thank you. And then, Mr. Decos, did you figure out whether or not Robinson is in the, is in the sewer district?
I did not.
Okay. So we, we don't have to do it now. I'm just, I was just wondering if you had that information handy.
I did not. It sounded like Mr. Cataldo's team has identified that it is, in fact, part of
Is that correct?
Part of it.
Correct, okay.
Phase one?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr., oh, please, you can go, you need to go next?
I want to address that question. I was just reviewing the plans that are 90% design phase. It currently does not show 12 Robinson Road as a spur. Often, that, that being said, the two abutting properties to the, where the dentist office is and then where Northern Bank proposes to also, they're within 20 feet of the line. I know that, I confirmed it with Light and Water, and they said that although they're not approving any new flow requests right now, they certainly wouldn't say no, you know, should it, should it meet the requirements.
Thank you.
At the expense of the property owner.
Correct.
Thank you. Please.
So they will allow for temporary measures for a septic, for a septic system, so it's not your full leach field septic system. There are other alternatives that are out there. When you have a system like yours that is well-advanced, if it's proceeding, they will allow you to set up a temporary system. Because our intention, much because of the status of the building, we wouldn't want it to go in further disrepair, which would be to proceed, get a temporary system in place and then wait for the sewer to come online.
Thank you.
By temporary, so they need something like a tight tank?
Yeah, or something similar to that, yes. And they sometimes will allow that in a situation like this where you're so far down in the process.
Mr. Chairman, the Historical Commission has no more questions for the Cataldo
Thank you very much. Are there public members who'd like to speak to this? Mr. Sanders?
George Sanders, 672 Great Road, Littleton. I will address the question with proposal one and proposal two. My concern mainly is with this board. This property belongs to the town. What is it that the town wants to see happen at 12 Robinson? Now, to maintain the historical building over there, as proposal one says, which is a limited amount that would take place on that property over there. Proposal two is going to take care of the property, and then, because everybody's in business to make money, so they're going to put some housing in over there if they buy the property, based upon what you sell it for to them. My concern is that if we're going to sell the property and we own it, and they're going to put housing in, I think this town has a need for housing for the seniors and affordable housing in this town. Now, they said that it will be affordable. Well, it depends on what you call affordable. I know that it probably won't be cheap. So we need to ensure, because we own this property and we're going to let it go, that the town needs to get something out of that that is available, that is available to this town overall. And one of the things you know that is available to this town is affordable housing. So based on the three or four units they're going to put over there, you know, they should muscle around and try to come up with at least one unit to give to this town, because this property owns to the town and it's in a good location and everything. So I think as a taxpayer, that we should get the best bang for our dollar. And I think that we should get at least, if they're going to build these units, we should get one unit over there, one unit. Otherwise, I think that you'd need to take a second look and thought.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Board members, would you like to speak to this?
I would.
Please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So with respect to the proposal from Mr. Cataldo, so just to be clear, so there will be a total of five housing units built on the property, and they will be sold. The units in the back would then be put up for sale at market rate. So there was, there's no affordable component to this at all?
Correct.
There's no rental component to this project?
No.
Okay. Has there been any look at the planning board, the Form-Based Code and their, their bylaws and things like that to see if this project would comply?
Yes.
Without
So, and that would be our proposal, is to go forward under the Form-Based Code. We haven't looked at all of the dimensional regulations and all of that, but we did take a quick look at it, and that would be our proposal, is to proceed through that.
Okay. And with respect to the units in the back, there was a parking space and then there was a garage?
Mm-hmm.
Parking space, which would accommodate, just say there was a couple that lived there hypothetically. But when they have guests over, where would the guest parking be?
I don't think we show guest parking on this plan. Right now, we're showing one in, one out. Again, it's conceptual, so if parking was an issue, we could try to address that with the planning board.
Okay.
Yeah. I think that the, I think for a two-bedroom unit under the code, it's required two parking spaces, but I, I hear what you're saying about
Right.
guest parking, especially where the sensitive, the neighbors may be sensitive about parking along Robinson Road.
Right, because we've had a lot of concerns addressed by the residents on Robinson Road with the access and ingress at the end of Robinson Road as it goes out onto the main roadway anyways.
Right.
Even with just some of the businesses that exist there now. So now, if we're going to add this additional component, I just envision if you have five housing units on this property and you have, you know, say 10 or 12 people to live there, well, if it's Christmas and everybody has their family over, if there's a birthday or there's something, I envision people then parking out on Robinson Road as overflow parking, because it just doesn't look like there's any additional guest parking spaces.
Sure.
That usually come, are incorporated in an HOA or a condominium association. So that's just what I'm not seeing, so that's why I was asking that.
Sure, and that's something we can certainly look at if this goes forward, is adding additional parking.
Okay. But just to be clear, so I'm going to purchase the property from the town, maintain the deed restriction, but then sell the units in the back, the three units?
We would sell all of the units. They would be a condominium association, so it would just be a standard condo where you'd have an exclusive use within your unit, but the outside of the structure and all of the land is owned by the association.
Right, so how does that, how does that affect the deed restriction?
It would not. So the deed restriction would run with the property. Mr. Cataldo, as the grantor, would put it in place, and then it would run along with the land. So then the next owners entitled, which would be the HOA, would be responsible for the requirements under it. So it just goes along with the property in perpetuity.
Okay, so I think the proposed proposal that was submitted was $300,000?
Yes, correct.
So from there, you would get five housing units, so you would then be able to sell at market rate?
That's correct.
Just to be clear.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
We're just talking with the, with the Cataldo.
Well, no, we can speak about
We haven't really spoken
No, we haven't, but I think any, you know, feel free to ask any questions or speak to anything you want.
Yeah, it's tough just walking into this. I think, you know, Mark would probably attest. Really, just looking at the last couple of days, so I can only lean back on, you know, five years ago when we purchased the property. I can honestly say I wasn't envisioning, envisioning either one of these. It just wasn't, you know, we're thinking, I don't know, a little theater thing or cafe, I don't know. Realizing, you know, I know the traffic piece has come up on both. I, I don't, it's, it's not that it's not relevant, but no matter what we put there, it was going to add traffic, unless a single family bought the house and re-did it and they had one spot. So that's a problem we were going to have regardless of what we did, and we probably should have thought that through a little more when we bought, I think, the property. But it is concerning. I really wish there was another way in and out of there with the properties next door. Connectivity piece, I just wish they could connect the parking lots there. That's even Form-Based Code, but that's tough to do with, you know, mixed properties. I like, I like the mixed-use idea. I, you know, that is, it is the district, and we're talking about that vibrancy for sure. My concern is, boy, do I wish it was on any other piece of property downtown and not this particular historic piece. I haven't really got to, obviously, I haven't got to speak with a whole lot of residents on, on this. I would love to hear just some thoughts, you know, besides, we don't want anything going there, because I don't think that's really something that the town can afford. We just can't keep continuing to keep this in disrepair and putting money, money into it. I think the septic address, where septic situation was addressed, classic construction property was keeping pretty much everything as-is, and it's going to remodel the, the single building itself. So it doesn't address, obviously, any of the things that were completely added by the Cataldo plan with, with, you know, some mixed-use property, which is very interesting. I, understanding that that district needs, needs this type of, you know, added vibrancy. It's where it belongs downtown in that area. But that, you know, that being said, there's one way in and out of there. And so I think we, we probably need to really look at that, that area. I haven't had the opportunity to do that as much as I would like. So I would like to hear some, you know, the rest of the board kind of talk to, maybe you've had more conversations with the residents. Maybe we need to have more conversation with residents to get, you know, Mr. Sanders brought up. Let's get some people involved, more people to kind of see what their thought process is. Realizing we're not going to keep it forever, that's not the idea. So, yeah, just some, you know, thoughts over the last 48 hours, if you will.
So I, I did speak to the residents recently about this. I think that the comment that sticks with me is it's just too much. And I think the other thing that they're concerned about is that they, you know, the dentist office on the end, when they have a full waiting room, the cars are parked lined up down Robinson Road, it's a narrow road to begin with, and they have trouble getting in and out of that. So
Chairman, can I address that?
Sure.
Because I live at the end of Robinson Road.
I figured, yeah.
That has been an issue as long as that dentist has been there.
Yeah.
So I think, I think, in my professional opinion, the way to solve that is for the dentist to develop a parking lot in the back of his property, much like what we're trying to do. I looked at this and I directed Matt and Melissa, and we wanted to take the parking off of Robinson Road. That's what part of your requirement was in, in your RFP. I said to Matt, eliminate the driveway on the property and make it look like it did years ago, which, if you've seen some historic homes, they have two gravel cobblestones going in their driveways, and that's what we're trying to replicate. The problem is not with what we're trying to develop, you have to correct what's next door. And I spoke to the Schwartz's, who are a neighbor, and I addressed the five units, and we talked about parking. And I said it would be wonderful if the dentist, if, can you put up the, the abutting property plan? It would be wonderful if the dentist put parking in his backyard. It would solve the whole issue on Robinson Road. Because what happens, and, and if we're the chosen ones and we go and we develop 12 Robinson Road, we're going to build a sidewalk, it's right now three feet. I walk it a couple of times a week. We're going to put a granite curving in front of it, we're going to put a five-foot walkway. So all we're going to do is we're going to push that car back out further into the street. So, and every day you go by that, that street, and my neighbors can attest to this, there is at least one car parked where that first tree is on 12 Robinson Road.
Yeah.
If not two.
Definitely.
And we're trying to address taking parking off the street and, and deal with it within the property, not add more parking to Robinson Road, because there's a pinch point on Robinson Road where in front of Mr. Yates's house, which is two houses up, the last house on the right that sits right on the roadway, the roadway narrows right there. So there's a whole issue of parking on Robinson Road to begin with. And, you know, that's, that's obviously not my concern with this presentation, but there are ways to solve that. And, and that, and that, I believe that's been discussed and brought before this board before. I don't know how recently, but I know it's been an issue, so.
Mr. Kunt?
I'm still formulating my thoughts. So I, I share the concern of parking on this site. I actually like both proposals. I'm concerned, well, the Cataldo proposal seems like I'm concerned, well, the Cataldo proposal seems like it would be something nicer to do in a couple of years when there was the Form-Based Code and the common was already re, starting to be redeveloped. It seems like this would fit in nicer at that time than now to me. This seems like we're starting early with something that we're not sure how it fits in. I like the classic construction, basically leaving the house as is, but improved. So, yeah.
Okay. You didn't speak long.
Have you formulated, have you formulated yet?
I, I agree as well. I honestly, no offense respectfully to both of the applicants, I wish there were more applications frankly. I, I, I would have loved to have seen, it's kind of pie in the sky type of stuff, but you know, some of the stuff that we had talked about, so one of the reasons we didn't go to RFP sooner is we were hoping that internally, whether it be the Historical Commission, Cultural Council or some organization within, within the town would be able to maybe use CPC funds and preserve the property and put something that would be town-owned. And the restriction would have to be held by another organization, kind of like we do with Conservation, the Suburban Trustees, because we can't hold our own restriction. So I'm, I'm, I don't know, I'm also disappointed. I do think they're both very thoughtful proposals. I do think they, they meet many needs. Parking is certainly a concern. I too have spoken to a number of the neighbors down there. The Schwartzes certainly are one of them. To Mr. Wilson's point about Mr. Remback and Mr. Wilson being brand-new to the board, I think in fairness to them, it might be worth kind of noodling this about a little bit longer and giving them more consideration, taking a deeper dive and deeper look at both proposals and having the opportunity for them to speak with the residents of Robinson Road and, you know, visiting the property and seeing what, what, as Mr. Sanders said, what the town wants. I'm not opposed to, if the town, if, if the board, pleasure of the board is to move forward with either proposal, I could get behind that. But I, I also, I would recommend that we kind of hit pause right now, take a deeper dive and look at what's, what's in front of us and give everybody an opportunity to look more deeply into it.
Can I ask a question to Chuck?
Yeah.
Do you mean a pause as in weeks or as in months?
Oh, no, no, I agree.
Because I agree with you entirely that it would be good if like the Cultural Council or someone stepped up to do something and it hasn't happened. So I don't know if you want to give them, you know, a last chance to do it in a couple of months or are you saying that ship has sailed and we really just need more time for Gary and I and to meet with the residents and talk and come up to speed in, in dealing with this in two weeks or four weeks?
So I, I think that it's important that you guys have an opportunity to take a look at it for us to, you know, kind of all have the opportunity to have everybody up to speed and knowledgeable enough. I don't want to say that ship has sailed, but I, I kind of think it has because it hasn't been an appetite for it or there hasn't been anybody willing to put in the time, effort and energy to do it. So that's not me being critical of any commissioner or anybody, because certainly we could have done it frankly, you know? But I, I do, I do think it would be prudent to allow you guys the opportunity to have a little more time, yeah.
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Mr. Lane, can you just recap quickly the RFP process and what was, it was for general purposes, how long that was posted for?
So, sure, so one of the things just to at least, at least say is that we're not obligated to pick a respondent right now. We can always, because one of the main things is that the town is, or the select board is picking what's going to be in the best interest of the town. You know, check like what you said, it's, it has been sitting for a while and there has been some time that's gone by for, for other proposals to come up. So with the RFP process, because we are dealing with real estate and selling, entering into an agreement to sell real estate, it does require a set process as far as where it's advertised, the central register, newspapers, period of time has to be at least 30 days from when it's advertised at central register until the bid opening. But a lot of the information that went into that packet also had to deal with the historical information that was required. Worked with the Historical Commission, Town Council to really pull together a lot of the documentation on the house, what the town was looking for, for the deed restriction. So, you know, for this proposal, that RFP was about 75 pages when you look at all those exhibits. You know, and like I said, if, if it's something that, you know, the town wants just to take a couple of weeks review at the next meeting because that is a lot of material and you probably want to look at the RFPs. Not only their proposals are lengthy, but also that the source document is pretty lengthy to be able to sort of then come back and have more, more questions. But the, the one thing is that the town doesn't have to take it, to take a proposal if it doesn't feel that it's in the best interest. So while I think there was consensus that there's two really good proposals that came forward, you know, you are able to take the time that's, that's needed. Doesn't mean that their proposal will be on the table forever, waiting for the board to make a decision. But in the end, you know, you are able to take into consideration what is in the best interest of the town and take a look at the evaluation criteria. I'll make sure that in what I sent to both of you that my evaluation criteria was there as well. So that you can sort of see how, how to evaluate. But again, in the end, it's what is in the best interest of the town.
Mr. Chair, so I, I did walk the property, it was raining. So I was able to go out when I first found out, saw this on the agenda. And it actually surprised me, it's a lot of space back there, it's kind of, I wasn't expecting it. But I, I was able to speak to one of the residents, I won't say their name publicly, just to kind of get an idea of what the thoughts were. And the individual asked me, you know, yeah, something you should probably speak to more residents on, in that area is to get some ideas to have at least, or have them maybe in a, in a group just to, maybe some ideas leaning towards one of these or the other and what their thoughts are maybe to make it even, you know, better. I, like I said, five years ago, if you said, no, we're going to, we're going to flip it and have a construction company move in or we're going to make, you know, put condos in the back, I, I wouldn't have, it wouldn't have been a thing. I hadn't even been thinking of it that way, so. Not to say that it's not a good idea right now. I, I really think these two plans are very different for sure. Both are going to preserve this, but there are little things that everybody's brought up with the parking and space and unknown, a few unknowns with the neighbor. I am looking at a huge backyard there, why, why we haven't talked a little bit more about connecting potentially these three together with some type of a parking plan. But I do, I, I personally would like more time, but I understand, I'm not going to say I would abstain. I, I would like more time, but I fully understand if the three board members want to act on this tonight with, with something. I have.
My, my opinion is that I think two, two or four more weeks is probably okay. I think, you know, trying to, assuming that we're going to have another exciting new proposal come in at this point is probably not going to happen. But just, just from my own point of view, I, I really do like the Cataldo proposal a lot. I think that it ticks off a lot of boxes. It provides starter homes, which Littleton is desperately short of. It is smack in the middle of Form-Based Code and it, it meets that criteria. Someone has to start, you know, like why aren't we, you know, this is the perfect, the perfect exemplar for that. I believe that the septic, you know, has been addressed. I think that the septic system is far enough along that it will arrive at that location. I don't, I think that Mr. Mullen is right, like the, the water department is not going to say no to a 20-foot addition to the spur. And I think, you know, I'm a little concerned about the price frankly. Like I think that there's no, you know, guarantee that it's going to be affordable, affordable. Given that there's small houses, that's great, but we've seen very small houses go for insane amounts of money. I don't know if we can address that or not in this part of the process.
Well, Mr. Chair, if I can address that comment, construction materials are going up daily. It's like, well, the stock market's going down, construction materials going up, so go figure, right? I guess buy, buy construction materials and resell it at a later date, I don't know. We, as a team, have talked about that. What, what could I tell you tonight? I can tell you a number tonight and you'll, might like it, but if I came back to you in six months or eight months and told you a different number, you'll say to me what you said. Well, that's the one difficulty right now. As far as addressing the board, I have a little frustration here because, and I'm only speaking for my team, not for Classics, but we both followed guidelines that you outlined, that we had to submit a proposal by a certain date. And we submitted that proposal and then it was radio silence. And Joe can tell you, I've been a pain in the neck to him about calling, you know, when are you going to hear this? When are you going to hear this? Well, it's after town meeting. And, and I just feel like you asked us to give up, give, give you our thoughts. I have spoken to Mr. Flanagan on Robinson Road, Mr. Yates, the Schwartzes, my wife, who also has a voice in this, my daughter. So effectively, I've spoken to five residents of Robinson Road. I've asked, you know, how they all feel. I have not spoken to their butter next to us, but we're trying to be respectful of the fact that this is the end of the Form-Based Code. I'm not going to tell you we want to vote tonight, but I don't want to see this continue on because you guys might say, hey, it's not enough money, go away, go home. That's fine, I mean, we'll do that, but we invested a lot of time and a lot of thought into this and I just don't want to see this linger on. I, I think in fairness to classic construction as well, you know, move the needle. You know, you had it out there, it's not our fault that, you know, your board had an election and so forth. And I just think obviously with everything else going on in the town, it's at idle. But I don't know, I just, I feel like something needs to happen and I don't know how many more discussions you can have with the residents of Robinson Road because they're going to tell you the same thing they've already told you. There's too many units and they don't like the parking on Robinson Road, those are the issues. We're willing to address, can we drop a unit? Absolutely, we can drop a unit. But then you're going to say to me, well, how much of the unit's going to be that? And Mr. Sanders is going to be mad that, you know, I'm being greedy. It's just, it's, it's all economics. I'm going to tell you, it's going to cost $700,000 to go through that house. Maybe even $800,000 by the time market continues to go up in, in materials. So it's, you know, it's all a function of the cost. Yes, the benefit is we get two units, but we're going to invest a lot of money to make that right. So I would just ask you to move the needle on.
Thank you. Just, just one second, hang on. Ms. Houston, you had something? I know you had your hand up earlier.
Well, I, I had a question. Anna Houston, 55 Jennifer Street. So my question is actually to address the hesitancy that I sense from the Select Board. Has Northern Bank been provided this RFP? Did anybody reach out to them?
I can respond to that. They did sign up and they did receive, so when, for everyone, whoever can, we don't just email out the RFPs. They have to register through our website and register their name, number and email and they did actually download it. So we are able to track that, they just decided not to submit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then another question through the chair, well, actually, this is more of a comment, but I think as we go through any development, any size development, one of the things that could be very helpful for the developer to consider is in, the question about affordability is if responses can be brought back in terms of AMI bands because we have bands that go from deep affordability to affordability to market rate. And I think depending on what any developer is considering, being able to come back to the board with information as we're considering the price range to be in this particular AMI, then it's helpful to be able to understand the kind of price ranges and who could afford them. So that's just a suggestion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you have another comment? I think let, I would like to just have a couple more because this has gone on for quite a while.
I would just like to add that this has been going on for a long time and I think, I, I would have liked to see something else. Several of you expressed this, I would have liked to have seen something else. But something else, that something else did not materialize. I think we have two quite acceptable proposals here. I don't see that continuing on, we're going to get anything, anything more. I mean, we can, what we can do now is only reject them, as I understand, the whole RFP proposal. We could reject them and start all over again, but it's not clear to me that that's the choice. The Historical Commission has certainly worked, as Linda will tell you especially, has worked long and hard with town, town attorneys and so on to come up with the RFP and the deed restriction and so on. I think at this point, it's time, you know, the old fish or cut bait, I think we're ready for.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, I wanted to speak again, but go ahead.
Sorry, I just wanted to explain that if, if the board, whether it was tonight or even in two weeks, said that, okay, we want to award the, the contract to X party, that then just starts a negotiation process. There still is the opportunity for, for then that back and forth before then anything is cemented. So it's not like you're choosing someone and then you're locked into what is exactly here. It does just start the negotiation process.
Right. So I just want to speak to both proposals again, if I may.
Yes.
Mr. Chair. So classic construction, I actually favor their proposal. It was more personally what I envisioned when we began this process was somebody, you know, taking over the property, purchasing it, using it for historic, preserving it for historical purposes. You know, bringing it back to its original grandeur. And using the property, having the property, I look at that streetscape and you have a real estate office, you have a law firm, you have a dental office, and then this would be another commercial use property. You know, they said three to four employees, they have experience rehabilitating these types of buildings. They have a proven track record with that. They actually put in their proposal what they felt that it was going to cost to bring the house back up to use for their purposes. Personally, I did not envision someone taking over this property and then building ancillary additional housing units in the back of it and then selling those units. We do need housing in Littleton, but we need specific type of housing. We need rental housing units and we need affordable units. And this property doesn't bring, the proposal from Cataldo doesn't do either one. They said that it was going to be market rate units. We all know what market rate units are going for in Littleton. Even if they're only 1,200 or 1,300 square feet, they're going to go for a lot of money. There's no doubt about that. So there's no affordable component to it whatsoever. Parking is a concern. I think there's a lot going on that site that it's going to be difficult to manage even though they're going to vet that process through the planning board. I still think it's going to be a lot. So I personally, just from my personal standpoint, I'm more in tune or more in favor of the classic construction proposal just because I think it's, I think it's what a lot of people envisioned when they, when we began this process personally, so. And I, I can appreciate other board members wanting more time to, you know, go through this and have time to talk about it, but I, I think we're going to be, we could be back here a week from now once you have more time to dive into the history and everything like that. You know, unless we decide that we want to reissue the RFP and be more specific, that we want it for cultural or arts or something like that, I don't think we're going to get any different proposals. And I do like, you know, I appreciate both proposals coming forward to us. I'm just letting you know that I prefer one over another.
Thank you. I, I think I'm kind of leaning towards deciding tonight. I think that you're right. I think that we're not going to get a whole lot of more. Like Mr. Cataldo said, you're, you're going to get, you're not going to get a whole lot of new information from going out and speaking to the residents. information from going out and speaking to the residents. I think that you're going to find pretty much what you have heard tonight. I would lean towards the Cataldo's proposal. I think that creating housing by rehabbing buildings is environmentally incredibly friendly. I think it does provide workforce housing. These are small units, which we don't have. We have almost no, like, 1,200 to 1,400 square foot units, even if they are market rate. There's the possibility we could ask for, as Ms. Houston said, some AMI guarantees, perhaps in the process of negotiating. So I would, my preference would be to vote tonight and to award it to Mr. Cataldo.
So, relatively quiet. I think that, although I appreciate everybody's opinion, I think that in fairness to the two new members, that this is something that's been, we've been kicking around for, since we purchased it. And I think another week or two before we take action, whether it be no action and not take either of these proposals, because it is a request for proposals. So as far as moving the needle respectfully, Mr. Cataldo, it's, we, one action we could take tonight is just saying, these aren't something that we're comfortable with. That doesn't seem like the way it would go because it seems like there are some folks that favor one proposal over another. But in fairness to the two new members, I'd be in favor of just taking everything under advisement tonight, giving everybody an opportunity to look at the 75-page RFP, see how it marries up to the proposals that were received, and making a decision at a subsequent meeting. I think our next meeting is the 23rd.
Correct.
May 23rd. So we could certainly see if the board were ready to do something next Monday night, we could do an off-schedule meeting. But at a minute, I think we should take a look at reviewing this further and giving everybody an opportunity to take that deeper dive.
So I will, I will let the seat to the pleasure of the board. If you would like some more time, we'll wait for the next meeting.
Yeah. You know, it's, it's a tricky one for me. It's been sitting out here for, I don't know why now it's all of a sudden we're acting on it. But I, I understand that a process is in place. Do I think if we say no to these two projects, will we get something else if we go right back out? I'm not expecting it. So it, my concerns weren't about the money we're going to make or anything like that. It was more about the study. These are two very different projects, you know, and I recognize the mixed-use part. And we do need housing. And yes, different AMIs certainly, but it's, the part of the common this is in, it's a very walkable area, or we're planning on it to be exceptionally walkable. I don't expect those properties to be cheap. It's going to be very hard to make them that way. I just think that they're in an ideal location. We are managing, if we look at the Cataldo, speaking to that one directly, we are managing some other options for affordability on the common and other areas for certain. So even that's, I just think it's, I'm more prone to look at that project right now, but my concern still would be the parking and the space and to get a really good idea. I mean, the plan I had, 48 hours to look at, had the driveway on the right side, where that big gigantic tree was, and right up against a house with a driveway to driveway, right? Which, without talking to that person, I wouldn't want it. So I can't imagine. But, and I have seen, when I did walk it, the dental office parking was definitely right down the street, you know, at that part, at that time of the day, so in front of the properties. You know, I'm willing to probably make a vote if I have to, but I'm not, as I said, I'm not fully comfortable with the town not knowing all the details.
About you, Mark?
So I, I looked at the proposals. I have not read the RFP. I have walked around the property. I haven't been in the property. I haven't talked to anyone on the Historic Commission or anything. So if we, if it's the pleasure of the board to vote, I will vote. I think kicking it down for the next meeting is what my preference would be, just to give a chance to actually get a little bit more information and a little time to digest this.
Sounds like the pleasure of the board is to just continue this until the next meeting.
I don't want to delay indefinitely, but the next meeting, I don't think it's ours to anyone to make it longer.
Okay. Mr. Sanders? Make it brief, please, sir. We've been on this topic for quite a while.
I'm going to talk a while when I get up here.
No, no. That would never happen.
George Sanders, 682 Great Road. Mr. Chairman and other members here, I want to remind you of something. It's imperative that this board be synchronized and doing and voting on whatever the issue is. You have an unfortunate situation, but if it was a fortunate situation, we got two new members on this board. Well, all the processing has nothing to do with what member goes and comes. So when this comes before you and you get two new members here that hasn't looked at 75-page or 30-page that was submitted on Proposal 1 and 2, whatever the case may be, it is not fair to the citizen of Littleton. Now, you made one mistake with 31 Shattuck Street because you didn't talk to the residents here, and I said, and I apologize to them for this board not talking to them. You need to talk to those people over there, find out whatever information it is over there that you need, and you come back at the next meeting and you either give thumbs up to Proposal 1, down to 2, or up 2 and down 1. It's just as simple as that. You don't have all the data here tonight to do what you want to do. You're bouncing around here and there. Let's get this thing right. Let these two people look and observe and talk. Even though it may be five years old, that's got nothing to do with it. It's that it's done right on the procurement procedure in selling property. I was a federal contracting officer for 15 years. I knew about contracts. So let's do it right. Let's start this board off doing what's right, not only for the board, but for the people of this town. Thank you.
Yeah, so I feel like we should continue this for two minutes.
I don't think any of us were going to object to that request, so, yeah, so let's go ahead and do that.
Would you like to make it on the 23rd and do it as a public hearing?
Yeah.
And we'll advertise it in the newspaper?
Sure.
Maybe we can get something out on LCTV?
Yes, that's a.
Or perhaps maybe we could even do a show and invite in both proposals to do a little summary so the residents can have an opportunity to hear both proposals.
I mean, somebody across town, whatever they want to think of it as, I mean, it's downtown, it's in an area that, we're trying to get rid of this building. I know that. I didn't know what we were going to do with it five years ago. I now have an idea of what we could do with it.
Right.
And, but my plan isn't, I don't need it to go out anywhere. I'm going to go find, I'm going to go talk to people, and I want to know what that, what some concerns are, so we can bring it up and I can address the two groups, and they have answers for me, and then I can make an educated decision. It's just very hard. I know, Mr. Cataldo, you mentioned that you had spoke to residents, you've done all of that research, but.
Looked down the street.
Yeah. But I realize, though, that if my neighbor says I'm going to do this, I'm probably not going to say, no, you're not. I'm going to say, yeah. So I just, I just want to get a good feel for that. And not saying that that is the way I'm going to go if they all said, no, I don't want anything there. I realize something has to go there. I realize we have to act as a board, but I just want to make the best decision. I just need a little more time, and I absolutely will be prepared in two weeks to make my decision, so.
Okay. That's the pleasure of the board. I think that's what we should do. So, sorry. Last comment. This is it.
No, the Littleton Historic Commission recommends a public hearing.
Thank you. Very good. Let's set up a public hearing for next, for the 23rd.
Motion?
Do we need a motion to do that, to continue it?
It's directed at the board. The board vote to schedule a public hearing on May 23rd, 2022, to continue discussion of 12 Robinson Road.
Second. Motion's been made in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous.
Are you making me make out motions on the fly?
Thank you.
Great job. You're getting a clerk thing now.
Wait a minute. All right. Select Board goal, oh, actually, Select Board meeting schedule. You said you had, Ms. Napoli, you said you had some.
I do.
Some items on that.
Right, so.
I plugged you, sorry, Anthony, I plugged you back in so you can pull back the presentation.
So in the packet, there were proposed dates for May, June, July, and August. So one of the things that we had come up with on the Select Board when I first got on the board was really just a schedule, a calendar, starting with the election and going forward throughout the calendar year, what we're supposed to do when. And I'd like to really get back to that. I think it's important that we be, that all members be cognizant of that. And, you know, Chuck and I actually had a discussion about really new member orientation because, you know, you show up and it's like.
There you go.
Hello, welcome aboard. And it's not easy. I mean, there's certain things, you know, we have policies and procedures and just things like that. So we talked about, you know, having like a new member orientation-type meeting. One of the things is to have an executive session update because there's things that we've discussed in executive session that new members aren't going to be aware of. And also just looking at that whole schedule that we had come up with about, you know, those things that we need to do in May and June, things we need to do in July and August, leading up to the budget process, and then town meeting in the fall. So I just want to be cognizant of that as we set our meeting schedule because I think we might need to have a couple extra meetings. We've got goal setting, which we all know is probably a meeting in itself, and we have to finish Mr. Anzaldi's review. So I just want to, I wanted to bring that up as we entered into discussion about this topic.
Do you have a list of the items and when they should, when they should be on the schedule?
I do, and I can share that with Anthony, and then he can share it with all of you.
And then we can manipulate it if we see, if we think of something else.
Yeah, it's really a simple document.
Right.
You know, it just talks about, it's basically, it just says, I'm just going to give you examples.
It's nice because it lays the year out.
It lays the year out. Like, just to give an example, in May and June, we're supposed to train and refresh the Select Board policies and procedures. We're supposed to provide updates about projects to new members. We're going to go over executive session matters, and we have a briefing with department heads on asking them to give us a goal update so that that helps us with our goal process. And then in July and August, we're supposed to have subcommittee updates, appoint our subcommittees usually. I don't know if that's changed since, from past cycles, if that's now different. We're supposed to have a joint meeting with the finance team and talk about budget priorities as we begin the fiscal year. So maybe if I circulate that document, we can then go through that and see what adjustments we want to make to it, but I think it's a helpful tool.
So how about we schedule the meetings, and then at the next meeting on the 23rd, we can discuss, like, which topics we want to cover when and whether we need, whether we need additional meetings?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Is that okay, Anthony?
Sure. May I propose that we do actually schedule executive session to bring the new members up to speed on anything that is out there?
For the next meeting.
With an executive session?
That's a good idea as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's do that as well.
I'm just curious what document you're referencing.
She's, she made, she's.
Did you make this document up?
We actually made, honestly, we made it up in 2017.
Okay, that's, so I, that's.
Yeah, so it's, yeah. But we just haven't really utilized it, so.
Okay.
I just want to get back to it. So I'll circulate, I'll send that to Anthony and have him send it to all of you.
Thank you. And on the rest of the, on the rest of this item, are any of the other dates here problematic for anyone? I believe August 8th, I'm going to be out of town.
We're going to get a lot of stuff done on August 8th.
Disagree. Let me just check here.
There's the potential I may be out on June 27th, but I don't know yet.
Yeah. Okay.
And, Mr. Chair, this was put forward just because, you know, it's sort of typical that the board meets second and fourth Mondays. It also helps with us scheduling hearings for licenses and things, as have sort of in the last sentence, that definitely there are additional meetings that the board can schedule. So as you go through, you know, retreats and other things, absolutely schedule as needed. But it gives us a chance, especially when we're thinking about advertising hearings, when to line up, when to give applicants an idea of timing. That's where it helps us out as well.
So I guess if one of us is missing for one of these meetings, I don't think that warrants a change, but if two or more of us are gone, maybe we should think about rescheduling. So the August 8th is the only one I have a conflict with. Does anyone else have any known conflicts?
No.
Okay, so are we good with just these dates then?
I think we go forward.
Okay, let's have a motion.
July 11th, I'm on vacation, but I'll, hopefully, we'll have an ETA in place, but if not, I'll certainly have somebody sitting in the chair to help that meeting.
Great. Maybe Mr. Sanders could do.
Thanks, George, a volunteer.
I moved that the board vote to schedule regular meetings on May 9th and 23rd, June 13th and 27th, July 11th and 25th, and August 8th and 22nd, 2022.
Motion's been made in second, and all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So I have a proposal for the goal and retreat process. I would like very much to schedule a couple days of meetings, and I'd like to do them in a row so that we could get some momentum. And I would like to accomplish all of the goals and the retreat in the same weekend or however we decide to do it. My preference would be on a weekend, and I understand that's hard for you, Anthony, so I would suggest that perhaps we trade days and you get a four-day weekend sometime. And I also want to hire a facilitator and have a, have a firm process with topics and an agenda and a schedule so that we get through the things that we need to talk about. And I was thinking that the library, that the new, that room at the end of the bottom floor of the library is beautiful, and that would be the perfect kind of place for us to meet for, say, two mornings on a weekend. So I'm curious what people think about, about doing it, like, going big this year in terms of a retreat and goal-setting session, because I don't think we really, I don't feel like we ever really completed the goal-setting. In the last couple of years, they've been, you know, it doesn't, it didn't feel like we ever completed them, and I really would want to have a full conversation in depth about all the things that are, that are in front of us. So I'm curious what people think.
Okay. If I may, Mr. Chair. So I think part of the goal-setting process, and we've talked about this in the past, but we've never really utilized it, is talking to the department managers prior to our goal-setting process, just to see what they might have going on.
Yeah.
Certainly, we've got the Master Plan Implementation Committee. I know they actually have an update of everything that we've achieved to date with the Master Plan. It's a fluid document, but it's in pretty good shape. I would love to meet with them and have them come into the board and just give us up to date because really there's, you know, objectives of the Master Plan that we're supposed to be trying to fulfill or promote. So I think that would help with our goal-setting process because it gets you thinking when you really look at the Master Plan, everything that's in that document, and that just has to do with the goal-setting process. With respect to the retreat, I agree with you, and I, actually, the board had a retreat a few years ago with a facilitator, and it was very, I thought it was very productive. And the thing that was really great about it was he circulated questions to each one of us individually, and we completed it prior to the retreat. And it was really interesting what came back in that document, and I still have those questions, and I don't know if it's something that we want to utilize, or I guess if we get our, a new facilitator, they might have their own method. But it's just a matter of finding time to find a facilitator. I think that's where we got hung up last time.
I have, I have a couple of leads on it that actually, actually Roberta gave me. I was speaking to her about this. Robin, sorry, Robin, yeah. So I can reach out to them and see.
Yeah.
I think, I think they're both from the municipal association.
Oh, okay.
So I can, if the board is okay, I will look into.
I think that would be.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful, and just, I, yeah, and just follow their methodology for the whole.
Yeah.
The whole.
Okay, thank you, that's great, I'll write that down.
But I think that's where we got hung up last time. So, I, I think the sooner we get that done.
Okay.
One of the reasons we got hung up, Matthew.
I will, I will, I will chase that, that part of it down on the retreat.
All right.
I'm fine with meeting with the, the implementation committee, but I assume you're talking, you're saying meet with them in a, in a board meeting beforehand.
Yeah, I think we should bring them in, because they've done a lot of work on getting that, this document together, and I think it just would be helpful us as a board as we enter into the goal-setting process personally.
Okay. What about the scheduling?
Chuck and I have talked about, I think we talked about it last year during the goal-setting process while doing it town-wide, like, not town-wide, but with department heads, and having what you said, the opportunity for department and the Select Board to come in together to hear what the departments have for goals and how they intertwine with the Select Boards.
Like a Super Saturday?
Like a Super Saturday, maybe it's a couple hours on a, on a Saturday morning then, and, and some communities do this, I know Bedford did it, retired.
Stonem.
Stonem did it that way, too, and it just, it, it, it really excites the whole organization, because everybody's gets, starts to get on the same page, because, you know, one goal may be housing, but, you know, maybe Marin's bringing up, you know, some sub-goals that, you know, we can start checking off, because the whole goal of housing is something that we're never gonna accomplish in a year, but there is certain elements of that that we can't.
Objectives that we can get to.
And we need specificity, right, yeah.
Yeah.
Well.
If that's the pleasure of the board, we're having a staff meeting on this week, so we can talk to staff about that, too, and I'm sure I could even get the former town manager or assistant town manager in Bedford that did it, if he wanted to come in and kind of do the process far, so we can all participate, it's just really being up on the whiteboard and then packaging it together, I'm sure they'd do me a favor for that.
Let's, I, I would, that sounds like a fantastic idea.
Yeah, I like it.
Okay. I mean, now we're talking about, are we talking about now three weekend mornings, or, you know, is this, is this the goal-setting and then it's, and then the retreat is separate, or?
I think the goal-setting, in my opinion, should be first, should be done soon, because once you start getting into July, you're gonna lose people.
Right.
So, I think that it would be really helpful.
With department heads.
With department.
You're saying goal-setting with department heads, and then the retreat another time?
Retreat, we could, we can do that, but that's just us, right? So, that's a separate, a separate whole.
I think that's.
But if we're gonna do the department-wide one, we need to get some dates availability, and we can bring it back to.
Let's, let's start pursuing that immediately. That'd be awesome.
Is there any Saturdays that are out?
Yeah, I'm going away in June, just for the weekend of the 28th, I think.
That's, yeah.
Is that a Thursday?
No, it's not a weekend.
No.
26th is a Sunday.
June 28th is a Tuesday.
Yeah, I'm going away Thursday through Sunday.
The 25th and 26th are out, the 25th are out.
23rd, Cindy is a, well, the 30th is a Thursday in June.
Yeah, it's a Thursday before, what's a Thursday before, the 23rd?
The 23rd.
Yeah, I'm going away that weekend.
There's a possibility that that's the weekend, if I go anywhere, that's the weekend I'm going.
Literally, the two weekends prior to that, I'm away.
All right, what, 11th and 18th are away?
I'm away the 11th.
Something like this we could do if we started at 5:30 or 6 o'clock, you know, maybe one of those off Mondays, where we can maybe bring in some, some dinner.
Yeah.
You could go to June 4th.
This, this would tap into like people's work schedule, but if we did something just so that, because we're asking employees whether it be on a Saturday to come in or to stay late, maybe, I don't know if we can shift. If we're gonna do it a weeknight, maybe we shift a little bit earlier, maybe it's not 5:30, maybe it's.
Yeah, maybe we start like, yeah.
Orish, or something like that.
Yeah, and then maybe just order Panera in, and we all.
Yeah, we, we can definitely do something, I don't, I know.
I'm fine with that.
Boards have to work.
Or you do something like Friday afternoon, Friday afternoon, we do that, and then Saturday we continue for us, right?
Yeah, for the retreat.
For the retreat or something.
Oh, actually, after Memorial Day, I do have to work.
So, you could do it like.
At 3:00 on Fridays.
Yes.
We start to lose some town, department heads on Friday.
Well, June 4th is the first Saturday.
So, my suggestion would be if we do it like Friday, June 3rd, and then the rest on Saturday, start for us on.
Well, will that, or Friday work for the employees, though, Anthony?
It might be a little.
So, why? Noon's kind of.
What would be the second? I mean, probably we had that.
Yeah.
I, I think it's hard, too, on a Friday night, because by Friday, you're kind of burnt out.
So, I think, you know, if we looked at a couple of dates, if we picked that June 4th date that you were saying for a Saturday, and maybe if we picked a, another day during the week, and if we had two days, or we can.
Before the 4th, obviously.
Yeah.
I mean, is the last, is the last weekend May too, too soon?
Well, there's your Memorial Day.
The 27th?
What is Memorial Day?
It's the 30th.
Yeah.
So.
Oh, that's Memorial Day weekend, so.
So, June 4th, Anthony, would be what? That would be Saturday?
The Saturday.
That would be our goal.
June 4th is a Saturday.
That would be our goal-setting process.
Select Board.
Well, that would include the department heads, too.
Oh, it would.
Yeah, we would do it, say, like, 10 to 12, because I think two hours would be fine. You know, and let's pick a date during the week and see.
Why don't we just go back to Saturday with the employees?
Yeah.
We're gonna try like a Thursday evening or late afternoon.
We can do that, too.
I mean, you said Friday's is kind of, but.
Right.
Like, June 2nd. I mean, it's a Thursday, it's before the Saturday.
Well, why don't we do, yeah, why don't, why don't we try to do, meet with the employees on the 2nd, and then the Select Board can meet on Saturday?
The 4th.
What do you think about that?
For a goal, for the retreat?
For the goal, to get the goal piece done first.
Your goal's gonna be incorporated with the department heads on the 2nd, so.
Right, but then we can have a subsequent Select Board meeting.
So, it's kind of the, the cart and the horse, right? Because their goals are supposed to be in support of our goals, but we're trying to find out what they're working on and what their, what their focus is, to see if it's in support of what we are creating for goals. Now, we can certainly tailor our goals to meet what they're working on.
Right.
But there's, you know, it's kind of.
Right, I'm, I'm thinking at more, just to get the feedback from employees on what they're, and, and, you know, the department heads, or what they're.
Yeah, what they're working on.
I mean, and that gives us a good idea of what we can discuss, and it might help incorporate some of our goals that we're thinking.
Right, and then somewhere get the master plan implementation committee in to meet with us, too.
Well, and, and we could do our goals as part of the retreat.
Yeah.
But I wanted, I would like to do more than the goals at the retreat.
Sure.
Or, we can do our goals, Select Board goals, separate from the department heads, I don't know if, I don't think that's what you had in mind when you were proposing your, your plan. You were thinking that we would sort of get the goals defined with the department heads in the room, and that would be it.
I, I think it's more of a conversation to, just to have a Super Saturday, like, have a conversation, all of us in the room with all of them has not happened, you know, forever.
Super Saturday that's relative to what you're working on.
Super Saturday, we're just gonna talk, yeah, just get feedback from them, find out what they're working on, to supply information on purposes.
And then do, and then formulate our goals after that?
Yeah.
Yes.
In a public meeting, or in a retreat, or, or what? What are you thinking?
I, so.
Probably should be in a public meeting, it's, it's town goals, and that's, in my opinion.
I don't think it would, yeah.
Okay.
So, this is my thought process, meet with the, the department managers, meet with MPIC, and then have our goal-setting process.
Can MPIC be part of that department?
Why don't we put them on for the 23rd? Right now, we have a.
Light meeting?
Fairly light meeting, so we can put them on for the 23rd and hear what they have to say.
Yeah, okay.
And then we just need a date for the meeting with the, with the department heads?
Well, we should, June 2nd.
June 2nd.
Okay.
Which is a Thursday.
Which is a Thursday. And what time do you want to do that? Anthony, you want to do that at 3:00, June?
I mean, as early as you think it, I, I don't, you don't want to spill too, stake in another night from the department heads, or.
Whatever the point can be available, they'd certainly appreciate you coming in when.
I don't know.
They're working hours.
They're working, yeah.
Yeah, is 3:00 early enough?
As much as possible, I mean, like.
I'll do whatever.
Oh, I also am flexible, I can do whenever, anytime.
In the month of June, a weekday is better for me than a weekend.
All right, but I guess to the board, do you think 3:00 is early enough, or should we come in earlier?
I would ask Anthony that. Do you think 3:00 is early enough, or would you like to try it for 2:00, or?
You know, I think 3:00 is okay, you know, obviously, when I schedule meetings, I like to do it in the morning, right? Because everybody starts fizzling out during the day, but you have regular jobs.
There'll be no fizzling.
No fizzling, right, but, but I, I think that they'd appreciate 3:00, you know, 3:00 to 5:00, and, you know, we could have something brought in.
Do a morning thing, before work, but I don't care.
Yeah, I think that's fine, I think they'd appreciate.
Okay.
All right, so 3:00 to 5:00.
Let's try that and see what they think.
On this.
On the 2nd.
2nd.
With department heads.
And MIPC on the 23rd.
Or the, yeah, or the designated, if somebody can't be there, then.
Then it's just our next meeting, the 23rd.
Yeah, so that's fine.
And then the 4th, you want to do the?
And then June 4th, Saturday, is gonna be our goal-setting.
Okay.
Super Saturday.
Okay.
And then we gotta come up with a retreat.
So, now I'm confused, because I, I, I thought that was gonna be a public meeting, ours, our goal-setting.
The retreat would be, if you actually want to do the retreat, but the goals are normally done in open session.
Oh, all right, never mind, I'm confused.
Do the retreat?
I'm gonna schedule the retreat, I don't know when that's gonna be.
Yeah, that's gonna, that's gonna depend on.
I'm gonna arrange it, arrange that and figure out when that's gonna be.
All right, so if you meet with the department heads on June 2nd, now we need another meeting for us, it's gonna be a public meeting for our goals.
Yes.
So, you're not meeting until June 13th? You could do an off-cycle meeting on, in between there, and just do goals?
Yeah, we could.
If you are able to nail somebody down for that June 4th Saturday.
I can try that, I mean, I don't, it's, it might be too soon, but I can give it a shot. But, 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 but the point is, I don't want that to be only goals, I want that to be a discussion about other things.
Yeah, more the retreat stuff than the goals.
The retreat stuff, yeah, so the goals.
To Anthony's point, should really be an open session.
Yeah.
Not that these aren't open session, even the retreat.
No, I know, but.
Just because I'm new to this, does the goal-setting have to be before the retreat, or they independent? So, we could do the retreat on?
They're, they're independent, yeah.
So, we could do the retreat on the 4th, and then do, meet off-cycle on the 6th?
Yeah.
Do you want to do the 6th? That would give you, the board, the weekend to kind of digest what you heard on the 2nd, and then come back that night, and.
Yeah, I like that.
Sure.
Does that work?
Awesome.
And then?
Uh, yeah, that works, so the 6th, we're gonna have a, a, a meeting for just goals for the Select Board.
Just goals for the Select Board.
The 2nd, we're gonna meet with the department heads, and then the, the retreat is to be determined still, although I'll, I'll give it a shot for the 2nd.
Okay.
Or for the 4th, so we have it all clustered together.
All right.
Okay. Wow.
Don't get sick that week.
That was harder than it should have been.
No, and what's gonna be harder now, Matt, is having the clerk put that all in the form of a motion.
You don't have to, Chuck, the week.
So, the next one is 6D, which is the review, review of Select Board's policies and regulations. I'm assuming that that is part of the list of actions that you have on your schedule.
It is, and the other thing that I wanted to talk to the board about is, we did some work on that, we actually hired, we had a consultant come in, it was a high school, it was actually a law student, came in and worked with us, this is before, this is when Chase was on the board, and we did a lot of progress on that, I think Anthony was assistant town administrator at the time, and we actually circulated the town code and selectman policies and two department heads, and they all came back with feedback to us, because there was things in there that were obsolete or just weren't right for various reasons. So, I have all of that information, and that in itself is a big project, and I know it's been a goal of all of ours to really dive into that, and, because we're supposed to review them annually, so I, I'd like to circulate that information through Anthony to everybody, just so you can see what we've already done, the work we've already done, and what, how we're gonna pick that up.
Great.
And move forwards with that.
It's certainly something that can sit on every agenda, and, you know, as.
And that's how I kind of set it up, like, structurally, we can just plug away at it.
Little at a time.
Little at a time, and there's some things in there that we're just gonna, just need to be abolished, because they were like, things that were done in the 70s that are obsolete right now. But you'll have a better idea what I'm talking about when I send it around to you, so.
So, just for clarity here, you're saying when, four or five years ago, whatever, the policies started to be updated, but they were never approved, so you're going to circulate what was updated?
What the work that we've done so far.
And then, and that's the basis from which we'll start?
Yeah.
Okay.
Great.
Okay.
Okay.
And then Mark will take it from there and finish it.
Yes.
Right.
No, we, no, Chuck, you're not supposed to say that until he's not here for a meeting.
This clerk thing is hot.
To throw just a little bit of curveball in that, is that from some of the policies, we have things that were incorporated into the employee handbook, so we also have, when Don was here, we, we had sort of made some corrections to reflect those changes, so then we have not only the working document that addressed what separates out to the employee handbook, and then that, what gets left over, but then the, the changes that Cindy was mentioning as far as that department heads and other people, so.
It's.
It's sort of like these two things that really need to be merged together.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Town administrator update.
Yes.
Ready, Mr. Town Administrator?
We don't need to be motion for any of that, right? We don't need any motion for any of that, right? You've got it all to consult.
I, I got it. Yeah, I got it all. I got it all. Um, yeah, so I'll, I'll go through the first thing. So for the new members, we had discussions with the ASPM, which is the D P W union. When we implemented the trash truck, um, that is something that needed to be, um, well, we didn't feel like it needed to be bargained, but we did sit down with the union and we agreed on a memorandum of understanding and agreement as far as they'll do that work. What we did is we added a stipend for those that are going to drive the truck, trash truck and be in a rotation. They're going to get seven hundred and fifty dollars a year to do that. And for the year one and then year two, it jumps up to a thousand dollars. So we've circulated the, the agreement. The union has taken a look at it. They signed off on it. So, you know, I know that to Gary and Mark, this is all new to you, but the board, this is one of the things that we did talk about in executive session. And we came out of that with formulating that and bringing it back to the board to vote on. So happy to answer any questions on that for, if you have any.
Just, sure, can I?
Yes.
Sure, thank you. So, so this is a stipend. This is, um, we picked up, we used to.
Still, yeah.
This used to be contracted.
It used to be contracted, right.
So now it's, now we're using our own, um.
We bought a truck.
Employees, we, but we did buy the truck, right? To bring, to haul the trash to where? Is it the same place every time?
Yeah, and we saved, town saved, and Chris did this, I think, two years ago when he proposed this. We saved a hundred thousand dollars by doing this and just on, and I'm sure that's even be more now with the price of gas too. So, um, by, by purchasing the truck and doing that service now inside, we were able to save a hundred thousand dollars, which really got passed on that we didn't increase the, the transfer station fees even more so because we, uh, made that savings.
Okay. So how many employees are we talking about that we get that stipend?
Eight. I think it's eight. I think it's eight.
Yeah.
It's about eight thousand dollars.
So it could be a maximum of ten.
With ten thousand max a year.
But that's including the general foreman and the working foreman. And there's, I know there's, I don't know if I'm talking out of school, but there's certain guys that just weren't going to opt in. And the two employees at the transfer station don't have C D Ls, so they can't drive it.
Right. Just, just to go back a little bit, if I may, just when we negotiated the contract, when we did all this, it was determined that this, this piece of equipment did not require any additional training, any additional licensing. If you have a C D L, you can drive one of these trucks.
Right.
And anybody that works for the highway department, not the transfer station.
Correct.
Is required to have a C D L. It's a requirement of employment.
So what were you bargaining for? That's what I'm trying to figure out. I don't understand that.
It was, this was way down the road when I started.
Before.
Okay.
Change, change of working conditions. So it came down to, it's a change of working.
It was advised to us by Labor Council that.
Okay. All right, so it's, it's already been bargained in executive session. You've come out of this and we're voting on it tonight. Thank you.
Any other questions or are we ready for a motion? Okay.
Moved that the select board vote to approve a memorandum of agreement, side letter agreement with A F S C M E Council ninety-three, local seventeen oh three, Littleton Highway Department.
Second.
Motion's been made. Second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
All right.
Just for the, for the board, as this goes around, there's three, uh, copies, but only two things. So make sure you sign the last page. And please ignore the, the front that says draft April twenty twenty-two. As you saw in the packet, that was removed. It does say May twenty twenty-two, but all the signatures are on the second page. We'll print out a new, uh, first page and then distribute to, um, all the parties.
Thank you.
I kind of feel like Radar just told me what I'm doing, but okay.
Just sign it.
Nagog Hill Orchard.
So I'm going to, so a lot of the stuff that was added here is when I was on vacation.
Thank you, Steve.
So I'm going to turn it over to Joe who will have more information on, on that.
So Joe is officially under the bus?
Yes. Where are you going? Your short time was so.
Under the greenhouse, under the tractor.
So, uh, for this, for this agenda item, so, uh, on Thursday, May fifth, as, as you know, and we have the Nagog, uh, Hill Orchard Ad Hoc Working Group, uh, worked to, uh, with town council to prepare R F P. We presented things to the board. Basically, everyone gave the go-ahead. Um, it had been out there, uh, just about two months and the deadline for responses to the R F P was, uh, May fifth. The requirements were that, uh, three copies of each, a price proposal and non-price proposal be delivered to the office by noon. Um, I did not receive any responses, um, at that time. I received an emailed response at twelve thirty-seven. Um, however, it is, uh, was deemed non-responsive, uh, and we cannot consider it. The Nagog Hill Orchard Ad Hoc Working Group is meeting on Wednesday to sort of identify, okay, why do we want to?
Just go back. So.
Yeah.
Deemed non-responsive without the exception of the board voting to accept the R F P?
We, we can't legally, we cannot.
It wasn't legally, it wasn't legally submitted.
He had it submitted by the deadline.
Maybe thirty-seven minutes late.
He had to submit it in person.
Correct.
Yeah.
So anyways, so, um, while the, the working group is meeting on, on Wednesday and talking, uh, through all this with town council, and this is where also, you know, this is, uh, something for the board to consider. Uh, did identify that, you know, because we did have someone that then was late and we can't, uh, consider that. Uh, the board could, for the minimal that's required, basically thirty days, re-advertise, allow for that to be submitted. The board can evaluate and in sort of a parallel track, the, the working group and, you know, reporting back to the board can think about next steps. Um, the person is very interested. He, uh, basically had said he got, um, sick with COVID, so he just could not meet the deadline, apologized, but is very interested. Um, so that's one of the options that the, the board does have. And again, with, like with Paul Robinson, if in reviewing things, it is not in the town's interest, you don't need to um, accept that and you can look at other options.
And hopefully.
But that at least is one thing that the board could consider.
Yeah, and hopefully we don't need the whole thirty days. We've asked Tom the, the legal minimum, you know, and if it's ten days, then ten days because you have somebody that's going to submit a proposal, so we don't need to wait thirty days. We don't have to.
Okay, great. Any, any discussion?
Are we allowed to look at that proposal?
No.
So, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So ju- just as far as this whole process goes, so, um, we had the Ad Hoc Working Group come in. Um, some of the members of that group did express concern about certain aspects of the R F P and the lease agreement. Um, they just felt it was too cumbersome, I guess for lack of a better word. There's a lot of legalese in there. There's a lot of language. They just thought it might be overwhelming to a prospective applicant. And the other thing too that was in there, we talked about the tax piece of it, um, the real estate taxes, the property taxes that the new less C would be obligated to pay. Um, so one of the things that we had, we're waiting for some information from Kathy Miller, so there was some, um, some addendums to the R F P that were then published. But one of the things that the working group members had discussed was, you know, giving the new less C maybe a, a year moratorium or would, lack a better word, on the, the, um, real estate tax component of it, just to maybe make it more attractive. Um, and the other thing too, I wanted to talk to the board about was, I walked through the house today, um, with Mr. Layden and Mr. Mullin, and I was really honestly pleasantly surprised at, at the condition of the house.
Good.
Um, and I, I think it actually would be helpful for the, I think we as a board should, should walk through the house. Uh, because personally, I've been, the, the years I've been on the board, I've never been in the house. Um, so I, I think that would be helpful for us as far as determining a path forward. I know we set aside money at town meeting to do a feasibility study on the property. Um, and some members of the working group had said, you know, is that really necessary? Can we utilize our building commissioner? Can we utilize our electrical inspector and our plumbing inspector? And just have them come in and assess, um, those components of the house because, you know, structurally, just from, you know, being in it, it's really not, I didn't think in bad condition, but I, I, I would like us as a group to walk through it and maybe get your input on that, um, as we, you know, discuss the path forward because some of the questions that we did get in response to the R F P, um, that are listed on the website had to do with the condition of the house. What's the status of the house? Had to do with the condition of the barn. What's the status of the barn? Um, and those things, and we just didn't have those answers, and I think it will be helpful to get those answers.
You know, like when, when we were there, uh, occupant, um, had basically said, you know, there's water leaks coming through here. Yeah, Ed and I, just from the outside, it's probably a small section of flat roof, about this big. That there's a leak. The rest of the roof actually looks pretty good. So some of the things, when you take a deeper dive, it may not be as bad as, you know, think. It is a old house. Um, uh, but, you know, again, I was pleasantly surprised. I was, I went expecting a lot worse. Um, uh, but, you know, to be able to go through and really identify what is, what is required and then maybe what is some, some minimal amount to improve things. But the fact that there's a big unknown, and we had to say, the house, because we didn't, it wasn't available. Um, it is, was not included as far as an option for the R F P. Um, so that type of unknown could have, could have had an impact. You know, it's hard to, hard to say. So, and there are some things with town, with town council, um, you know, yes, it was very legalese, and we pared back a lot of that. But if you're thinking of, of someone outside of sort of what we do, looking at that, it could be a little scary. So what are, maybe engaging through the working group, town council, uh, to, to sort of help identify, what are some ways to make this a little bit more user-friendly to try to?
Before we reissue it?
No, I, I think you can do things parallel.
Okay.
Because it's going to take some time to revise the document and all those things. And if you have someone that's interested, you can always, um, entertain, you know, interview, see what that is. That may be viable. It may be something that is above and beyond maybe what the town is looking for too. So it just allows you to do those two parallel tracks.
I would, I have a suggestion that we, instead of having to meet as a board to walk through the house, another quorum in a meeting, what?
Right.
We could probably work with you, you and, and Ed to, uh.
We can post.
Two people go through with you. Just, yeah. But I'm just saying, you don't have to post if it's just one or two of us going at a time on any given day when they're available and we're available, a couple of us are available, then.
Let's take a time.
Just set an end date.
Ed has to go five times if we do it that way.
Yeah. During the day.
I mean, I'd, I'd rather have us there collectively, just so we can be talking about it.
And that's, and many zoning boards of appeals and planning boards and things like that, they do site visits, they'll do it, they'll post and they'll.
Okay.
Yeah, collectively.
It's not going to take long.
And technically, you don't have to post to do the site walk. The only thing you have to post is if you start deliberation. So you can go observe and say, any discussion is going to be at six thirty at.
Right, so we actually meet at six thirty. We could conceivably, you know, meet up at the.
Five thirty, meeting at the Orchard.
Five.
Yeah, just walk through and then talk later.
And then get, get here in time for our meeting.
No talking.
No talking.
No. Then we can get here and we can.
All right.
I mean, the, the, the biggest thing up there is mechanicals, uh, energy efficiencies. Maybe we get Nancy Kerrigan to go out there and do an audit and, you know, see if we need some new windows and stuff.
Do we? Sorry.
But I think that there are consultants out there. I know we're, we're, we're not an N star community or national grade or whatever, as far as, um, electric is concerned, and we don't have as many rebates and things like that available through Littleton Electric Light, but there are, there are rebates that are available that we could have some audits done, energy audits done through Mass Save.
That's down low.
Doesn't cost us anything.
Right.
So to, to work in conjunction with Ed for stuff like that, and they're going to say the windows all, you know, the single pane windows, they need to be replaced.
And that's why I think it'd be good for us collectively to go see the house.
Yeah.
So you can see what its condition is.
Um, so should we move to, uh, extend the, uh, R F P?
So, uh, well, before we go, I have a couple of questions. How many people actually pulled the R F P?
Twelve.
So are we suggesting that we change it to less legalese language and then?
Repost it?
Repost it, and then if we're doing that, we probably will need more than the ten-day minimum. It'll probably have to be longer. And, but it's going to take us a couple of weeks before we get there, right? So is there, it's, so we're still talking, like, we're not doing anything realistically moving forward on this.
My recommendation would be only to update the, the, um, the dates and then send it out as, as for those, for that thirty days.
Since we have one.
And then revise, um, because those can happen parallel.
So we would put addendums out basically to, or dependencies.
Any, any of the addendums that were put out, I would just incorporate right in. So for example, there was something where we said, um, property taxes estimated to be fifteen thousand dollars. We then changed and said, well, if you're just doing the land and the accessory buildings, it's going to be seven thousand. If you're going to do the main house, it's an additional, uh, twelve. That gave to nineteen. So breaking it out so that people knew, okay, here's, here's what it, what it was.
So it's town-owned property yet? We're charging property taxes of lessy?
It's legally, it's, it's what's required.
They found out we have to.
But there's, there's some, this is where it becomes more of a question.
It's ambiguous.
With town council and assessing because there is some ability for that to be set. And we just need to have those conversations.
Right.
So.
When I do the motion, are we looking at the thirty-day window or are we seeing a time to be determined by town council?
Time to be determined by town council.
But make it the earliest, because, you know.
Right. That's the goal, right.
Flower, it's going to, it's going to stop flowering and berries are going to start popping from those trees, so.
Yeah, so we're having our, our meeting once a night. I'm going to propose, you know, to the working group that we reissue the R F P, change the dates, but then in tandem to that, go over the document itself and see what, what we might want to change.
We'll vote tonight to authorize to put it out.
Yeah.
To put it out, right.
We ready for that?
Yeah, I'm ready for that.
Moved that the board vote to authorize the town administrator to re-advertise the Nagog Hill Orchard request proposal for a period of time to be determined by town council.
Sir.
Motion's been made. Second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Yeah, so briefly, Joe, with the nine-year road.
Okay, so, um, uh, just before the election, I had given basically a, uh, we have Fields come in. We had this as an agenda item, identified that they were in the process of, uh, planning landscape. Uh, Mr. Mullin and I had, um, uh, Mr. Mullin had gone out before that meeting. I indicated to the board that I would go out, do an assessment, provide the board with a summary. Um, I provided that, uh, that summary is part of a memo that was included in the packet. Um, in, in very quick summary, um, the landscaping, while it was not per plan, was actually in many ways an improvement to the plan. Uh, some of the vegetation was deciduous and, um, uh, grasses that, uh, quite frankly, just was not as, um, uh, impenetrable of a buffer. Eventually, it will grow together. Um, so, uh, they had replaced, uh, some of the, the grasses, you know, those tall ornamental grasses with arboviti, um, green giant arboviti. Uh, they had spruces that were also, um, sorry, cypress that were also planted on the, on the property. Um, and I think it is, it's a very suitable replacement and it will give, um, more of a buffer for two of the really primary property owners that are most, most visually impacted. Uh, so I, uh, recommended that, um, the, the landscaping be viewed as in, in compliance with the decision. I did identify that there was some, some areas where it seemed that the grass didn't, didn't take, um, uh, upon, uh, sending that out and because of some construction that was going on the site, I wasn't able to verify it as part of the, the site visit that I saw, um, that, sorry. Uh, I wasn't able to verify it by doing a site visit before doing the memo in the packet. Uh, Ed and I did go out today, um, met with, uh, Mr. Field, uh, and did observe that compared to when I first was out there, that the grass is starting to grow. It is germinating. That they had put down additional seed. They had overseeded it as well as fertilized. And basically, uh, Michael Field had said, look, grass is growing. It's, it's going to come up. And we had a discussion as far as, well, how, what level of assurances are we able to um, identify that it's just going to continue, um, to, to grow? And basically, it indicated to Ed and I that if there's any barriers or areas that are not, um, establishing, that they will come back in September to, to reseed. Um, ultimately, it is in front of the planning board right now. That slope is not going anywhere. Um, uh, it's one of those things that, um, I didn't see really any evidence of any erosion. There's no, you know, like you, you see on the side of, of newly sort of graded, uh, slopes, you may see like the little.
Washout.
Exactly. It's really well-draining soil out there. There isn't any evidence of that. Um, it's just that on some areas, it's, it's a little thinner than others. And, um, I do agree that over the next month, the grass is going to seed. And then if they come back and overseed, um, in the fall, realistically, they should be fine. Um, so I, I think that there, while we've taken a long time to get there, I did view that they were, um, significantly in compliance with, uh, our, uh, removal permit. Uh, the quantities, um, as was stated at the last meeting, they didn't take out as much as they originally had requested, uh, to, to have taken out. And realistically, that's not a problem. Um, so, uh, they are currently in front of the planning board for a special permit for, for, uh, a common driveway to serve, serve four lots. So I want to try to get things to the board as well as, uh, then allow for that to funnel its way through the town planner to the planning board. I don't know if anyone has any, any questions.
So as far as the, um, the arboviti and the cypress that were planted, um, the, the in the, as they abut the property in the back, in the rear.
Yeah.
To slay right lane, those arboviti are, I don't know, twelve, eighteen inches tall?
Uh, no, they're about, um, uh, three, uh, so some of the cypresses are about two and a half to three. Some of the arvo, are provided about three to four feet tall from what I observed. There are smaller, um, deciduous shrubs that are about eighteen inches tall. Those, um, according to looking at the landscape, sort of, you know, like when you look at vegetation, they basically say they grow to a foot, foot and a half a year. Um, so right now, they're being supplied by water, um, and they're going to fill in.
What was the expectation? I think we, I think we had the expectation it was going to be the, the more mature plantings were going to be planted and.
That's, that may have been maybe what people expected about looking at the, at the plans. Um, uh, there weren't, uh, uh, specifications as far as the ultimate height of what was going to be planted. Um, so, um, uh, looking out there, and they've also been planted at a, uh, at a density that's actually closer than the seven to nine feet that was specked on the plant, uh, on the plans. Um, I think with all the landscaping, I think one of the main things is that, uh, when they grow up to a foot a year, um, you don't want to plant them so they're right next to each other, otherwise they're going to kill each other. And, but realistically, it's going to take three, four, five years for them to grow together. Um, it is easier for some of the smaller plants to re, to establish themselves in new, uh, soils compared to planting ten-foot all specimens. But they also were planting a lot. That is a lot, when you draw the line across the abutting, that is a lot of material that they also did, did plant. And I understand the, the concerns from, from the neighbors that.
That was our concern. That's why we held a fifty thousand dollars surety bond.
Yeah.
To make sure that it was, it met, it complied with what the neighbors wanted, whether, you know, and, and. I'm, uh, I'm not sure it satisfies what we had set out for compliance. Just from my own eye test.
Have you been out there?
I have. It just, there are some that are taller, but then there's some that look like they're, you know, twelve to.
Yeah.
Eighteen inch.
It could be.
So I, I, if I were one of those abutters, I wouldn't be happy with what's, with what's there as far as the screen. Because that was promised, the screening was promised, it was going to be mature. As far as washout, it seems like there is some washout going on. I don't know. I, I think we put that surety bond in place to make sure that this property was as, in, in compliance with the conditions that we put forward, and I'm not sure whether it is.
Anyone else have opinions on that?
Um, you know, I, obviously you two walked the site and Mr. Mullin, I, I, my first thing, I was just looking what happens follow-up on this, and it does look like part of this memorandum is up to a year. So I would assume nine months from now, we go out there and half the. So I would assume nine months from now, we go out there and half the arbovitis are dead. According to this, they have to replace them or they're diseased or whatever, so. I didn't coverage, but yeah. I mean, I thought, I'm I'm no soil expert, but when I went by, yes, along the road, extremely green lush grass, for whatever reason, on that whole backside.
On one side.
Looks like washout, but I.
So what, yeah.
You guys walked out there and walked it, so.
When you when you go, if you're looking at it and you see how it sort of almost looks like it has streaks that it's like it's going down.
Yeah.
What we were both told today was that the mix that is on the right side, when you immediately go in the nice green section, they did not plant that in the fall. Or, sorry, in the fall, what they planted was a rye mix so that that is just regular grass rather than something that was a mixture that was more for slopes and also had a bit of clover in it. They started overseeding the rest of it with that same mix so that over time, it should start to come along. I think one of the issues is that when you're out there and we were on the slope looking, it is starting to germinate. It's what you saw isn't washout areas. It basically is just, it just hasn't taken in that area yet. And those are areas that he said that he had reseeded and or overseeded and fertilized. And it's gonna require looking after and to see if come summer, whether or not it's it's persisting. And then if not, it will have to be reseeded again. We do have the bond, we can we can hold that to ensure. And they do have the responsibility of maintaining that landscaping and they do have water up there to make sure that that happens.
If I may, Mr. Chair, in one of the pictures, what is all this? It looks like just brush or trees behind a fence, like a temporary fence in one of the pictures. Is that, what's the abutters name there, Chuck to the right?
TJ.
No.
TJ.
No, you're you're talking about this right photo?
Yeah.
This is Jay.
TJ.
No, not TJ.
Jay McHugh.
Yes.
Back left.
Yep.
Furthest one.
Yeah.
To the left from on Slay Ride.
Yeah, so the construction fencing that the Fields had up was the typical sort of like you'd see in downtown Boston, the.
Six foot chain link.
Right, exactly. So this is this is fencing and posts that are really the abutters.
Chicken wires.
So the abutter put that up?
Yeah.
Okay, so the abutter, then all those trees and branches or everything?
So within within that area is as a requirement, the subdivision that went in for Slay on Slay Ride, a fifty foot no disturb. So within that area, that basically just isn't supposed to be be touched. The plantings are outside of that fifty foot as as close to basically the the property line as possible.
So grass, arbovitis and willow, dappled with willow?
Cypress.
So the the dappled willow is the, when you look at the landscape plantings, you see the one by McHugh. Those are the smaller ones. Those are deciduous and those have a mature, those will grow to be about ten feet wide at mature.
The smallest ones in the in the picture?
Yeah, yeah. Versus the green giant as well as the cypress, those will grow to be fifteen to twenty, fifteen for the cypress, twenty feet for the for the arboviti.
Any other comments?
I I don't like it, but.
You don't like it because it's not?
I just don't think it it looks nice. I don't think it gives them any privacy. I mean, that's a big drop off, I think, from the Slay Ride lane side. I just, from what they were looking at to looking at this, I just.
I don't guess what was what was agreed to.
I guess I'll ask you a stupid question. What's the, A, what's the rush? Are we holding them up from something right now? I was just curious.
They're they're hoping that because the the property is currently in front of the planning board for a special permit for that for that common drive, the planning board wanted to make sure that all conditions of the decision have been complied with.
Well, I.
Realistically, the if the board holds on to the the bond to see how things go and to reevaluate in the fall, that it that can be sort of divorced from the special permit process because it is our permit decision. And if the bond is in place, then the board could reevaluate looking at that.
Yeah, I guess that was my question, Mr. Chair, is that what if we?
I just envision the arbovitis dying.
Well, that's possible in which case.
Yeah.
They they can be replaced.
That's in the memorandum. I just, my only, it would just be if if the board's uncomfortable with it, it sounds like, then if there's a way to separate the two of the planning board, letting them go ahead and then, you know, we can, but.
I mean, I don't know that the decision said.
They're not gonna grow all that.
I don't know that the decision said it had to be, you know, visually blocked, you know, a month after they put the plants in. It just, they they specified heights, they specified plantings and spacings. And Joe has said that they actually, the Fields have actually put in more more plants than they were required to.
Next to TC and Jay McHugh, the other residents, right? But when you go out there and you're up top, that's where that fifty foot buffer really comes into play with the existing vegetation that's there. Those those arbovitis in that specific location, they're realistically never gonna provide a one hundred percent obscure screen.
Because of the fifty feet?
Because because of the the fact that you're just gonna have a row, but the vegetation behind it.
Yeah.
Is already fifteen feet tall. And that's an area that is just gonna continue to to grow up. So the the screen for for the fives is the existing vegetation that's within that no disturb. For TC and then Jay, they had areas where they had forested areas that you could see through the trees. That's where the screening is more effective and that is where they reinforced it.
Okay.
And I I totally understand, you know, you look at a plan, you look at the the pictures going, you know, like, well, these, looking at the dots, these are gonna be soldiers standing arm in arm along this whole thing. And then when you look where it says seven to nine feet, you know, center on placement, they do need to grow into each other. And that's one of the hard things is, yeah, right now, it's not. Five, six years, they're gonna be pretty big.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I I'm comfortable with the if if and Joe walked the property and they saw it and they're comfortable and I mean.
That's basically how I feel as well. I mean, and if they're responsible for maintaining these, if something does happen to them, then then, you know, we do have that to fall back on as well, so.
Mr. Chair, may I?
Yes, you may.
I do support Joe's memo that he circled tonight. And I wanna say that the area where you guys think it might be erosion or tension is actually the track. So Mr. Field decided to, after the winter, some rocks did push up through the soil. So he actually went up with a rock hound and pulled a lot down. So if you look at the bottom of the slope, he's pulled a lot of rocks back to the bottom. So you're seeing a lot of track disturbance. That's why he went out and watched overseas. He does believe that it will green in just as well as the area that is not.
I definitely propose we should follow up on this in September and look at it again. But what's the what's the pleasure of the rest of the board?
I wanna reiterate.
Okay. Yes, this Houston.
Hannah Houston, fifty five Jennifer Street. I actually had just one question. And that is, in the memo, there is a sentence toward the end that I would just like a little bit more clarification on. It says, regarding site stabilization, more work needs to be done to stabilize the slopes. So I was wondering if there is more detail about what might not be stable on the slope.
Sure. So and what I meant was basically vegetated cover on the slope. So that's, grass needs to grow in. That's that's basically it. That's what I meant by that. You know, when you're in those areas that Ed was talking about, where they they had more recently pulled down stones and it is a little bit more bare dirt and it's not uniformly across the whole thing, it's in sections.
Right, you can see what.
Right, and that's where they have to establish grass in that area. That will allow for, you know, making sure that it can be stabilized from. I'm not worried about the slope, like things fluffing off, but it just, the organic material in the top soil without the vegetation is over time, it's just gonna, as it rains, it's just gonna percolate in, it's just gonna be part of the sand and gravel and nothing's gonna throw on that. And it's not gonna be easily maintained. That's that's the the work that needs to be done.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. I I asked that question primarily because when the application was before the planning board, Green International did make a recommendation.
You'll get one by email, I don't know.
Thank you. Green International did make a recommendation about having a geological engineer take a look at the slope. So I just wanted to make this board aware of that. And depending on on how you wanna take a look at the slope situation, I just wanted that to to be on the record. So thank you.
Thank you.
So back in the fall, we were told that they were going out there like that following Thursday or something like that to do all the seeding for everywhere else except for TJ's side. And if that were done, then it would look like TJ's side.
Yeah.
So now if they're just planting now, of course, it hasn't germinated. Within forty degree days and it's been windy and so if it had been done in the fall, we wouldn't be having this conversation and saying, why isn't it done?
So I totally agree.
All of the 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 stabilization and all that, if if the grass were in there, we wouldn't be questioning this right now.
Correct.
But the fact that it's not is why we're questioning it. So I'm not comfortable myself letting them off the hook, frankly. So I think they they're they need to be accountable for, frankly, not doing what they said they were gonna do last fall. So that's that's where I can.
And so what do you, so are you saying we?
When I see grass and I feel as though it's stable, like they said they were going to do.
Then.
Then I'm comfortable signing off on the permit. And then I'll still retain, in my opinion, I think we should still retain the surety bond until such time as it's fully accepted.
Okay.
So in the memo that was in the packet, the last line says, I would recommend compliance with a soil permit be conditional on reseeding and establishing ground cover. In this memo, you don't have the conditional part.
No.
So are you no longer suggesting conditional or you are? Or did I miss it?
It's quoted up here.
Okay.
So by them doing the the seeding and having the the commitment to reseed any areas that have not been established, I'd sort of work that into any sort of like approval saying, if this is, the board is gonna reevaluate and this satisfaction of the the permit is based on if there are any areas, you have to go back out and and reseed it.
So we have to put that condition on it. We have to make it conditional. If they had complied, there wouldn't be conditions.
There's, I I think we know through this whole process, if they had done things on a timeline that they indicated they would, we could have avoided a lot of headache for everyone involved.
So we can't, we could condition it upon the fact that.
But why should we put the conditions on it for something they didn't do? They didn't execute, they didn't meet our 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 conditions.
Yeah.
The previous conditions. That's my, that's my point.
I understand, yeah.
I mean, we we gave them conditions, they didn't meet them. So we're gonna give them more conditions on top of conditions.
So but your but your contention is that they have satisfied it, I mean, I'm not.
That they're that they're in, that they're.
In compliance.
In significant conformance with the decision. However, there is the, the board is able to say, you know what, I wanna kick it off a month. I wanna see what is coming in to see if we need to revisit and identify something else. I think the one of the the pressing issues that they have is that if if their public hearing process is being holding, holding up for planning board to for us to sign off on that project, realistically, the board may not sign off that the grass is there until the fall.
Yeah.
Or you could sign off on it two years down the road. It all is is dead and, you know, there's, you know, then you're sort of like stuck trying to figure out, okay, how do we get our hands back around this thing?
So it does say in there that Michael stated that in a month or two, the grass will fill in. Let's wait and see. Show me, show me a month or two if the grass is filling in. I mean, a lack of compliance for them does not create a sense of urgency for us so that they can go to planning board.
Right, but you but, on the other hand, we have the surety bond and they, we could divorce this from the from the planning board process and and keep fifty thousand dollars if the grass doesn't grow.
And realistically, the board could say, we're gonna hold on to this for X, Y, and Z. And, you know, realistically, if, say, middle of June, it's not coming in, realistically, you don't wanna then go out and seed the end of June. You're gonna be back there in September to try to do it because you, if you're if you're planting grass, as we know from our own yards, you cannot do it in the middle of summer.
Yeah.
So you're waiting until.
The time to plant it is in the fall.
Yeah.
That's why they said they were gonna plant it in the fall.
Yeah. And you can relate to the planning board that we have bond to then ensure compliance.
I mean, that's what I would, I guess that's what I would suggest, but I I don't know what anyone else thinks about this.
I've said my piece.
I know, and I'm I'm hearing like one thing from Joe and and Mr. Mullen and one thing from you.
I just, I've been down this road many times with this exact developer. Obviously, I'm just, I'm going based upon experience and frustration. And I unless and until I feel as though this is complied with, I don't feel the need to release it.
Obviously, you guys have a history as a board over the last, I don't know how long, but I, you know, all I am is the resident at that time going by there and watching this mountain get dug down to a hole and there wasn't, didn't seem to be a whole lot of urgency then. So it seems like the urgency now is switched onto us to to get something done. And if you are not comfortable by what that document says, then we, I don't mind severing the two at all, actually. I mean, it means the same goal at the end of the day, so that they can proceed with the planning board. But if you're not comfortable, if if that thing's, I don't know.
I don't think they've substantially complied.
Then I will, okay, that's, then I I will accede to that and you don't have to approve this tonight. But, you know, I don't.
I think one of the things would be then, whatever middle of June ends up being, giving things, thirteenth may be too soon, you know, you're evaluating on the twenty seventh of June. And then if things aren't, then you're probably working with town council to formulate a letter that says X, Y, and Z. This is what we're we're gonna do.
But you're you're, are you, so that there are two items here, there's the cob, the ground cover, and then there's also the the screening. Are you more concerned with the cob, the erosion and stuff?
That's the erosion part of it.
That should, we should see change.
That one, I would say.
In June, we should see change. I I mean, you put grass in your yard, seed in April. In two months, you should see a significant.
I mean, in in going back and reading through it relative to the the height, Joe and Ed are saying that they put in more more shrubs than they were supposed to, if they if they truly did put in the types of shrubs they were supposed to or better, taller or what have you. It was my understanding that they were going to be more mature and taller to begin with. And you've got some that look like, you know, they look like bargain store potted plants, some of them. I mean, they did, they look very junior, very, very young. So I mean, I can I can get past that part of it, but the part, I mean, I feel as though the the grass part, the erosion part, when they stood here in front of us and said that they were, it was literally like a Monday night meeting and they said that they were going out there on Wednesday or Thursday and they were, they were.
Last fall.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, so so let's wait, let's wait to thirty days. Let's wait and see if the grass takes.
That's the end of June then. Whatever the last meeting in June is, twenty seventh.
Twenty seventh.
Very good, thank you.
Would you comment upon them to come back in or?
I think that would be one of the things to invite them in to have that conversation.
Okay, I'm sure we'll hear from them before.
Uh, Mr. Unsaldi.
so the two job descriptions. The, so the two job descriptions, the health nurse and health coordinator have been worked on, formatted in our format. Cindy, that was, there were some tweaks. You would ask to have it presented back before the board. And that's what we're basically doing right now, is presenting them. If there's any comments, Michelle's here and.
So these, this is just the job descriptions. This doesn't have to do with the MO.
Plus, they were graded. Last time, they weren't graded. So they've been graded by the personal bill Schmidt, personal advisory committee.
Okay. All right.
Could we have, yeah, someone speak?
Michelle Viber, HR Director. As Anthony had just stated, we met with the PAC for the first meeting on April 21st. And thank you to Bill for taking the time to not only teach myself, but the other committee members, our entire grading system that we have used in the past, the personnel board used. He went through the classification system, the evaluation system, and put it all together for us to be able to do this. So these are the first two job descriptions the committee has looked at. You have the public health nurse. There are a few minor changes in there. So if you have any questions, I can answer that. They did issue it at a grade nine. There was a pretty clear consensus across all three committee members for the grade nine. And speaking about the public health coordinator, they also read through that, graded it. And I don't wanna speak for Bill, but Bill's grading and the other two committees' members' grading were a little different. They were kind of pushing a 10. It was coming out as a nine, but they were pushing it to a 10 as this position does supervise the nurse. So the other grading from the third committee member was, it pushed over the line at an 11. Really difficult to get it into an 11, just explaining to the board our current structure. Currently, in the grade 11, you have the director of Elder and Human Services, as well as the director of Park and Rec, which if you're gonna compare a public health coordinator to those two positions, you can't, right? It's, it's very different, very different levels of responsibility. We are amidst a comp and class study that has been going on for, I think, two years now. I have spoken to Gov. HR. We are hopefully wrapping that up within a few weeks. I have collected new data because our data had been outdated. So I've collected new data from comparable communities. The representative from Gov. HR is plugging that all in to update the data. And the second half of that is just taking anything that has changed since we started the study, any new, excuse me, new positions that have come up or reclassifications that have been done. I need to get those to Gov. HR so they can also include those in that study. When the study is complete, it, it may shift things around. We don't know what that will look like yet. Our current structure is a little compressed right now. They're looking to spread those grades out a little bit, which could impact these positions, but I did just wanna mention that to the board.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yeah.
On supervision given, Michelle under public health nurse, it says supervises any staff assistance during emergencies. Can you explain that to me?
Sure. I'm actually going to defer to Ed Mullen. I do think it has to deal with if there is an emergency, any lower staff that is underneath, so it won't be a town employee. I think it will be a volunteer staff member, but it's the volunteers that would help coordinate and facilitate that emergency.
But it could also be Cindy, so during, during the pandemic, you had some communities hired extra nurses using KIA's money. So those extra positions would fall under the public health nurse, and she'd be supervising those people.
All right. Is it worded correctly, though? Supervises any staff assistance during emergencies? Is there a word missing?
Or is it, should it be assistants as in TS, not CE at the end? Like plural of assistant.
Supervises any staff assistant during emergencies?
Is it a typo?
Yes.
Yeah, the assistant.
That's what we were confused about.
It's definitely a typo.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's probably, it's spelled check, didn't pick it up.
Okay. It's, I mean, assistants is spelled right, but I think it's supposed to be assistant maybe?
Yes, sir.
Okay. From a legal point of view, the word should not be supervised because they have no higher fire authority. It would be direct.
Direct, thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Bill.
And you can just put associated medical personnel or whatever, you know, you can broaden that out. So give them more responsibility in the sense of bodies.
Yeah, this, I mean, I mean, this is near and dear to my heart for sure. We're, we're trying to work, and I know the team and you are trying to work within an antiquated grid system that we have. Very difficult, and it's, these could look very different in a few months. If, if this compressed schedule gets pushed out a little bit both ways, we could be looking at something very different. And I know it's very hard, I know for classifiers to look at this because you can't think that way. This, our grid system's gonna look different. Try to grade it that way. You have to grade it for what it looks like now. And I, hence, I, I have to assume the variance. You had three graders look at this. Sounds like pretty significant differences across the board. But the manage, the manager wants this as an 11. That, is that correct?
Correct.
And it graded, it sounds like it graded low. Is that?
From two members, yes. And, and what happens is in this current system that we use, it, it doesn't, the points are so spread out that it takes a lot to get to the next level, but when it, it got, I mean.
Yeah. Well, you just gave an example of, boy, that doesn't sound right, but that's the problem with our grid structure right now.
Correct. But if I look at that grid structure for those two director positions, they do not remanded a grade 11 on the comp study, which is not going to be done until a few more months. So you are correct in that the committee did rate the job descriptions as they stand now.
And those two directors would be above a grade 11?
Correct.
Okay.
Could be.
Could be, right, no, but, okay.
The preliminary analysis shows they are.
I, I guess my question would be, we're obviously competing against other communities for this same, same type of talent. What are, what are we looking at? I mean, is, is obviously, if it's a grade nine, if it's grading out at a nine, then my goodness. In, in other towns, it's grading out, forget the grade, just talk salary. Then it just happens to grade out higher, then we're not gonna win. We're never gonna get people to fulfill this job. So that's, that's my big concern.
That was my question as well. This absent, absent comp and class, how do we come, how do we come about this? Did we get information from, data from other communities? Did we, did we, you know, did we look at the MMA website to find out what's, what?
We, we did, yes.
We have to do. Just a point of order, too. He hasn't identified himself. He spoke twice tonight, so just for the record.
Oh, sure. Bill.
Can you identify yourself, please?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Bill Schmidt, Forkin Rock Street Personnel Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mullen.
Just wanted to make sure it was on the record.
Thank you, Mr. Mullen.
So, yeah, we've worked really hard to try to make sure that this is, you know, to steal some of the words that Joe used in a meeting the other day, that we would classify this as an engineered level position. Somebody that's got a, you know, a strong background in public health services, soil evaluation, understanding the installation of a Title V septic system and the requirements, even the town bylaws, you know, created by the Board of Health. So we wanna make sure that we can compensate that individual. And if we're advertising anywhere outside of 11, we're not gonna get anywhere close to the person we're looking for.
Okay, yes.
I'd like to respond to that. This position requires a baccalaureate degree.
Oh, could, yeah, could you, I'm sorry, could you stand up there so that the people can hear and see you? Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Bill Schmidt, Forkin Rock Personnel Advisory Committee.
Chair.
Who?
Personnel Advisory Committee Chair.
Oh, okay.
Just got promotion.
The position requires a baccalaureate degree and a minimum of three years' experience. The Boston Area Survey Group states a disposition is averaging somewhere between $55,000 and $70,000 per year. That falls within a grade 10. The public health nurse, since we're still talking about this, is a grade nine. Requires a minimum of a registered nurse, preferably bachelor of science or BSN, one to three years' experience. That right now is somewhere in the vicinity area of Boston, which is extremely high, $65,000 probably as a minimum. A nurse coming right out of school with a baccalaureate degree is going to get $55,000 to $70,000, depending on the institution and location. When I did an evaluation on this position, I look at it from a compensation point of view. I don't look at the optimum. You have to look at the minimum requirements to do that particular job. And then you make a comparison with that with other internal positions within the town. This position does not equate to the director of Park and Rec or the director of EHS. Their elevens, since this does not equate to that, it has to fall in a 10. The evaluation came out in a grade 10, at the low end of a grade 10, in my professional opinion. That should answer the questions, I hope.
So the question, so I guess, what question are we asking for, for us tonight? Are we asking, are we asking to, for the, for the board to approve the grade or just the description or both?
So it would be for both.
As presented.
Yes, and post of.
And post it?
Yeah, authorize it.
I guess we could do it and see what happens. And if we don't get any applications, wait for the comp and class to come back. I, I am loath to delay this further given the timeline that's gone on. Nor am I interested in putting something out there that's gonna sit for 60 days and have no responses if, if the salary is insufficient. So I'm curious what the rest of the board thinks about what our, what our path forward could be.
I, I mean, I kinda said my piece. I, I recognize the urgency of this position and where we were at with the Shoba Board of Health. That, that ship's kind of sailed, so, and what we're trying to do with the Health Department. So the problem is the grade, we're grading this in a system, like I had just said, that is antiquated. And it grades out lower than Navy Market. I, it sounds like we're gonna have some problems. I don't know. But I, this is where HR clashes with, you know, the hiring process with managers. And I, so this is, this is a tough one for me. I mean, I, we have to decide if it's a 10 or 11, really.
Yeah.
Because we agree that we need the two positions. That's done, right? That's already been approved, I'm assuming everything's, so we're.
I, I think it's, I think it's a nine for the nurse, an 11 for the.
Coordinator.
Coordinator. And we'll put it out there. And if, if, if the opinion is that the EHS director and the Park and Rec, community education director is, this position isn't at par with them, then we have to trust that the comp and class is going to fix that.
We already know that there's upward movement in those.
Yeah, we need to move forward.
So if that's the objection to a grade 11, then I would say that we can go with grade 11 for this because it sounds like those two are gonna get bumped up. Yes, sir.
We don't know if they will.
I understand.
Under the existing system, they're.
We can't, we can't go back. Those are rated the way they're rated. We need to, we need to make this happen.
And the hiring range for, for salary is $67,000, six to $84,000.
For a grade 11?
10.
For grade 10, okay.
Grade 11 is 74, six. This is the old schedule. This is not the one that was just approved for July 1, just as an FYI. The old one is 74, six to 93, roughly.
Any other comments from the board members? I guess I would, I would suggest we approve it at a grade 11. Mr. Wilson, you're the, you're the subject matter expert here.
Yeah, I, I, you know, it's, I, I understand what the board is trying to do and why we have to do it, but I, I would, I have to grade it for what it is. I'm sorry, that's just my.
Which is a 10?
It is, it's, if that's what this graded out of, and it grades out as a 10, and then we move it with the new comp comes in, then we, then we talk. But I, I fully understand if the board goes the other way with this and the importance of this position.
The issue is that the comp and class study is, is about a week away and always has been and always will be.
No, it won't.
It's gonna be one of my goals now.
Since I got elected.
It's gonna be one of my goals.
I'm half done.
Comp, it will be done.
No, it will be done.
Well.
We need a motion.
We do need a motion. I, I would, I would support grade 11.
Move that the board approve the job descriptions for the public health nurse and public health coordinator and authorize posting of the positions.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor can signify by saying aye.
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 You didn't say the grades.
Did you say the grades?
It, it's as posted, it says add posted, so that would be nine and 11?
Nine and 11. Nine for the nurse, 11 for the coordinator.
Yeah. So we have four ayes, Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, I'm in.
Okay, thank you. Four, that's, that's passed, four a one.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mass Works grant program.
Joe, is there a reason to you out of this?
Just an update for the funding?
It was a request. Because we didn't really understand what happened.
Right.
As far as.
Like where, where this, where this earmark came from in the bill, like everybody seemed surprised by it.
Oh, no, we were, we were fully going for money from the state for the sewer. Absolutely. We were, we were begging.
Okay.
And in conversations that Mr. Lepoli's come in here and said that he, he is going to try to get that up to 12 million, I think was the number that he.
Right, originally started with.
It was, yeah.
Six million.
Three was our ask, and he was trying to get up to six million.
Okay.
And he said, but I'm gonna go for, I'm gonna go for broke. I'm gonna try and go, go for 12 million.
Okay.
And the result was.
It's just the way it's worded in the, which I can't pull up the bill.
Forty-seven, twenty.
Yeah, it's specific to the King Street development. It says it clearly in that, right.
I just, so have we submitted our Mass Works grant application yet?
Not yet.
But we've already got the state's earmark funding for us. I just, it seems odd to me.
It's an earmark.
Well, it's.
I'm just trying to understand the process.
Earmark that requires us to submit an application.
Right.
Because if we don't, then it's not coming our way.
You know, I think it's probably, it's, this is politics 101, right?
Tail wagging the dog.
If, if, obviously, we kinda found the developer that as the connections at the state level to get that kind of money. If we didn't have him, would we even gotten anything earmarked other than the $250,000 for downtown revitalization like everybody else would have gotten? So it's not, I was surprised when Cindy first sent out the email. I said, what the hell's this? I don't even know what's going on.
Yeah.
But, you know, on the other hand, I'm on the, you know, let's not look a gift to us in the mouth, right? Because I think that we're getting, you know, I, I think when Chuck and I met with the previous board knew that we were meeting with the undersecretary of DHCD, and we talked about, and Sal certainly was pushing that day a $12 million number, you know? And it was, it was the Lepoli companies that were pushing that, not us. You know, originally, we were happy with, you know, we had that $6 million earmark for the sewer project that never got funded, it never probably would have gotten funded. But so that was always a number that, hey, if we could ever get that $6 million, you know, that would be great for the sewer project. So he was pushing that, plus he needs other work that's, that's gonna be part of that project.
Well, I guess that was my question, is the other work, like, so Mr. Lepoli met with the governor clearly to get funding for the town. Very appreciative of that. But who decided how that money was gonna get spent as far as infrastructure improvements versus sewer improvements? Like, who made that decision? Because it, has that decision been made? Or is it just a number and we get to decide how we're gonna, how it's gonna be spent? Like, who's, who's making that decision?
Yeah, that, that's a good question. I haven't even seen the plan. I just, other than what we've initially saw, that, that two-dimensional sketch, but I think that what he's looking. But I think that what he's looking to do is, and Joe and I have talked about this, is those two streets that are going to be kind of his vein, or Central Lottery, or whatever you want to call it, is, is going to be public ways, that he wants those to be public ways. So with that comes streets, sidewalks, water pipes, all that infrastructure work that needs to be, to make those get the services to there. Now, will they be ever public ways that we're going to have to be responsible for? No, that's always going to say something, that's part of the development. Very common that they do that, they did it at Assembly Row, they did it at Lynn Street Market, Lynn, um, the marketplace at Lynnfield. So, that's very common that they do that. And that's, helps get the, the infrastructure work that they need in order to completely build out the project. How that dollar amount is, I have no idea how that...
And I'd also hypothesize that some of it, because it's all state wrote roots in there too, in the common area, that talking, they probably had conversations with Mass Highway, we're going to have to redo some of the signals, maybe some of the intersections, study some of the things, and it would have been nice to be part of that conversation. I'm sure that there's, there's, there is some background information that supports that.
Well, I guess that's my point, it's for the town of Littleton, so who from the town of Littleton is part of those discussions?
Or are we going to take the number and then fill in the blanks and get up to eleven million with what we, what we want?
I...
I mean, I'm...
So, when you do that, when you do Mass Works, you're supposed to be able to identify, like, what is your, your ask? You need to build the budget, all those, all the things that are substantiating, like the, the public investment that is being requested to, to cover the infrastructure costs. You know, you're building a budget. There needs to be conversations before Mass Works is, is due June eighth, because you have to identify as part of Mass Works what the project is. Now, is this something that gets broken up into multiple submissions across like a year or two? Those conversations need to happen.
This is, I mean, I agree with Cindy, this is really weird.
Like, you look through the list, this is one, there's very few cities that have an eleven million dollar line.
Right, so let me ask you this, so as far as Mass Work grants go, right? I know we, we have five fifty King Street, but who decided that that's where we wanted the money to go to? Like, we could, we have plenty of projects in town we probably could have applied for a Mass Works grant for, right?
Not necessarily.
We're complicit here. We're complicit here. We absolutely let the governor's office know that we wanted as much money as we could get to do the sewer and to do economic development.
I knew about the sewer piece of it, but I didn't know about the infrastructure.
Well, in the conversation that you two had with the, with whoever it was from the governor's office, I assume that you represented that you wanted it for five fifty King Street, with Sal?
Right.
Is that, is that correct?
He was talking about this project, and, so we weren't asking, ever expecting that this bill was going to be out there and that we were going to get eleven million dollars. All we did is, hey, DHCD, look at this great project that we have. And Sal said, this is what I'm trying to do, they need a sewer system. They, you know, they got an earmark before that wasn't funded, they need six million dollars, we need site work, we need streets, we need sidewalk improvements, road improvements. That's the, I don't even know if he brought up Chuck, do you recall if even a number came up that day? Was it, was it, did the number come up that day?
I believe it did.
Did it, twelve million dollars at the time?
So, and honestly, so you had this meeting, we never got a recap of this meeting.
We did it at a select...
I remember Anthony like summarizing it for us, yeah, he definitely did say that.
So this is money that we're giving from the state, it's not money we need to repay back, that we need to pay back?
No, I don't know.
It's a grant.
It's a grant.
Okay.
And this is being funded by the state's allocation of ARPA funds as well as other capital.
I just, I just thought it was odd, just when it came across, because I was like...
The fact that it is a bill that, yeah, that we didn't even know about it, you know, it's...
Because I'm like, oh, the town of Littleton, okay, you know, you're on the select board, you're like, oh. Glad I'm reading about this, you know, I just...
What, how are we going to determine how this money is going to be spent? Who is going to determine?
Based upon how we, based upon how we submit our application.
Well, who is going to, who is going to do that?
Where, it's going to be...
Joe's going to have it done by Wednesday.
It's kind of...
Yeah, you got like four days, Joe, get on it.
We're going to be doing it with the...
I think my allergies are bugging me, I'm going to call out sick.
We're going to be doing that with the Light and Water. So they're going to do their piece, we're going to do our piece. There's a piece that Sal's team needs to do as far as job growth and all those...
DHCD has made themselves available to help us with it.
So what is our piece?
Yeah, but I'm curious, like, there was discussion about, is the Highway Department going to be involved?
Who's piece is that? We've got light...
Highway Department, no.
My humble opinion, I believe that Anthony's office would coordinate with the town planner as well and talk about the decisions to be made for...
So, so the select board has no input on that?
Well, we should have set our goals so that they could know what to spend the money on. I'm not being facetious, I think that's actually what the goals are for.
But does the select board actually know how to spend eleven million dollars in spite of a major project like that?
No, 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 but what I'm asking is just to be part of the conversation, I guess, and just trying to figure out who's making the decisions for the town.
Charlie Baker.
No, not Charlie Baker. You just told me, you just said the Light and Water Commissioners are working on part of the grant application. The town's working on part of the grant application, and then DHCD's working on the other part of that?
DHCD is available to help us.
So, but who's working on the town piece of the application, is my question?
Town Administrator's office, that's going to be me after Thursday.
Okay, and so...
And Light and Water staff also, so like I gave them the, everyone invited to participate. And there's a series of questions that they'll have to answer. And part of it is, is there's going to have to be a sit-down between both teams to spec out, what is the request, what is the budget? I, I personally have a hard time figuring that application is for this round, going to be a million, a million, sorry, eleven million dollars. Because you don't know, you don't have the traffic studies that are associated with five fifty King, you don't know what the impacts are. Off-site mitigation, with this eleven million dollars, there may be other stipulations that says, here sewer, this is water, this is transportation. Those conversations have to be had.
I get that. So Anthony's sitting with the Light and Water Commissioners and having those conversations.
Staff.
Staff. Is anyone from the board sitting and having, being part of those conversations?
Neither is the Light and Water Commissioner, so we met, we met and...
No, I'm just trying to figure out the process, that's all.
We met with Corey and, and I believe Chuck, correct me if I'm wrong, I invited, I asked if you or Paul wanted to be there, and the response back I got at the time with Paul was the Light and Water Commissioners are not going to be there, so he didn't see the need to, to be there, because you were getting a sewer update meeting that Thursday. And all we wanted to do is coordinate who was doing what part of the application.
And that's my question.
So, there's technical aspects of a sewer project that, when we were running the project, just like the last time we got a three, the last Mass Works grant, Ed's right, Maren played a big role with that, with me, and she would play another big role with that. But Light and Water, their CDM Smith is obviously going to play an impact, because just like when we did it, Weston and Sampson completed a portion. This is a bunch of people putting together all the technical parts of a Mass Works grant.
Yeah, and that's all I'm just trying to understand is the process, that's all.
The five million that isn't the sewer, like, who is, what is that going to be spent on and who is going to determine how that is spent?
If it's listed as infrastructure, it's infrastructure. It's, it'd be us, unless it's earmarked differently. Joe, you, I haven't received that...
Is there a way that the developer can, can expend the Mass Works monies if they're earmarked?
Without us?
No.
And we're, we're the ones that are signing the contract with the state that's coming through.
But you're saying, but you're saying infrastructure is the town administrator's office? With advice from the planner, or I just, I'm trying to figure out what infrastructure represents, that's why I was asking about the Highway Department.
It's the engineer, it's, he has his engineers as far as what needs to get done. I don't have that information, nor am I an engineer, so I can't give that...
You mean, you mean the Water Department engineer, or...
No, I'm talking about the developer's engineers.
I don't think any of us have the answers to this.
No.
I mean, literally the article, the, the House bill, there's one sentence that says Littleton Convent, King Street project will expend eleven million dollars, and there's literally two sentences that, not even like one.
Yeah, we were just as surprised as everybody else.
And it doesn't give us a layout, any detail.
To Matthew's point...
But it's just an earmark, so the governor can get this through before he's no longer the governor.
Please continue.
Yeah, but to Matthew's point, so how are we divvying up the eleven million?
Yeah, that's, that's where...
Is that part of the process?
Is that part of the process?
I think as part of the process for the Mass Works, they're, if there's been conversations as far as what's needed, that eleven million has to be phased, and it has to be substantiated by twenty-five percent construction design plans. That's what Mass Works requires. So, there's got to be conversations that then, now that we're past town meeting, that have between Sal's engineers team, you know, and our side, to say, okay, how are we dealing with this? What is the initial phase? What's going to be a later phase?
So, I guess my question, so what's...
So, those conversations just haven't, I don't think they've happened yet.
All right, so what piece of this whole process is more beneficial to the developer versus the town? As far as the expenditure of that, of those funds?
I'm also like a little skeeved out by this whole thing. Like, this is weird. I mean, we don't even, we have eleven million dollars, we don't know who's going to be responsible for determining where it's spent, and it's not going to be the select board.
That's where, at least I would disagree, I would say that it is the select board, because ultimately the select board has to approve submitting the Mass Works.
Okay.
And entering into contract. So, it's just, it's a good conversation, I think, to have, because it means we got to grab a bunch of people to come back.
So, at the very least, I would think that we've always talked about a number of six million dollars for the sewer.
Yeah.
So I would think that six million dollars for the sewer and five million dollars is for everything else.
And a little bit in the community.
And that's not, it's for the community.
No, I, that's all fine, right.
It'll definitely benefit the developer, for sure.
No, I, look, the six million dollars for the sewer, I totally get. The five million dollars, I still have not heard what that's for. And I don't know where, how it's going to be used and who's going to benefit from it. Yeah, yeah, I know Sal's going to get some benefit from it.
It'd be more comfortable if it laid out that it's going to widen the King Street, the Great Road Bridge, something like that. But I think, I think what we need to do is, we need to charge Anthony with reaching out to our legislators, reaching out to the Undersecretary again, and just say, hey, thank you.
That's the first thing.
Can you shine some light on this for us?
Yeah, I'm not criticizing.
What is, what is our next, what role do we play?
I'm really confused.
Heads for, yeah.
Just trying to figure out what's...
So I think that's what we need to do.
Well, I mean, it's people, it's like, well, what's going on? It's like, I don't know what's going on, I'm like, how do you know what's going on? You're on the select board, I'm like, I don't know what's going on.
Yeah, well, what you say to them, just say, say thank you.
Yeah.
No, and I'm not...
Start with thank you.
I'm not ungrateful about the money, I'm just trying to figure out the process and who's doing what.
The common infrastructure stabilization fund.
Yeah, so...
So just, yeah, so, so the roads inside there, in order for a mixed-use development, for residents to be able to take advantage of those various stores and restaurants, you have to have access.
Yeah.
And that's what some of that money would be, is to create, to create the access in order to even have that, in order for that to even exist. So if it's six million dollars for the sewer, yeah, we heard the sewer's maybe more, just like we found out the senior center's going to be more. But, you know, I don't know how much we can pull away from the other side too, you know, it's...
Well, it's just, it's just a matter of knowing.
It's fine.
It's just having the information, that's all.
I see Mr. Sanders, but this, it's almost, it's ten-thirty, I gotta move on. I'm sorry. You said you couldn't talk quickly earlier tonight, and I'm going to hold you to that. Please, give me a phone call. Please make it quick.
Yeah, George, seven-two, great lord. I talked to Nick, I stay in contact with Nick. Nick gets a lot of information. He told me, when that grant came in, that the sewer was getting six million out of it. Now, Nick may be able to group in on the other five million, so I would suggest contact Nick and find out from him what information he had, because he gave me that information.
Thank you.
Nick's the gatekeeper.
That was my, we could probably just end it right there, right?
Why didn't you say that thirty minutes ago, Gary?
We'll have more information.
Make a call to find out, the last thing we want to happen is because of our inactiveness, we don't get the eleven. We get less because, oh, we've only really earmarked six to go to this.
Yeah, no.
I just want to make sure that...
It sounds like everyone's...
We're very eager to get the other five million, and we have a plan for it.
Okay.
I'll build that community pool.
Yeah.
No, I'm just saying, but you know what I mean? There's plenty to do up there, so...
I'm sorry? Assistant Town Treasurer?
Let's move on.
So, we're good. Let's just stay in the loop on that.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, we'll, we'll definitely...
All right.
Yeah.
But that was actually a very valuable discussion, so thank you for putting that on the agenda, I appreciate that. Assistant Town Treasurer.
Yeah, so, the, we're ready to hire somebody for the position, I don't know if that's been identified.
Do you want me to?
Yeah.
I had sent, I had sent the email to the board with the resume of the person as well as the letters of support.
Let Michelle summarize.
So, we do have, I think you got a separate email with a resume in front of you, it is an internal candidate. This candidate has worked for the town for about six years. They do have experience doing the payroll. Three of the most complicated payrolls that are in the town right now, which will greatly help out our finance department. That is the highest priority in that office for this role. The secondary portion of the role is the Assistant Treasurer Collector portion, which there's room for this candidate to grow, learn, and improve on their skill set.
So the reason why it's on here, because part of the person, part of the handbook says that we can only hire up to grade three. And they want to hire grade five. Step five, sorry, step, steps, step five. So that needs to come before the select board, for the select board to approve the hiring at that at a step five.
Okay. Yes.
Right, so the position that we just, that, we just lost our Assistant Treasurer, that was, that was a grade ten, correct?
Yeah, it's the same grade, yeah.
You stepped out, though.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, so, all right, that was the first question. So that was, that's not, so this is, the employee is currently a grade what?
Currently a grade nine.
Okay.
Nine, talk ten.
Nope, eight.
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 So this ten-five is seventy-four?
The range, the range for this position was posted at...
Ten-five is about seventy-four thousand, correct? Okay.
So...
I mean, what did number, I'm just curious where just, where the five came from? Is it because we looked at what the employee's making, conversation was had, and then this, this is where with land makes sense?
Correct, so with the experience that this employee has, plus what they're currently making now, again, that negotiation happened in, between the manager and the employee.
That's all I have on the card.
Do we have a motion here?
Yeah.
I can make it up, I want to take...
Oh, yes, sir?
I, I, just have a question.
Yes.
I thought the original title for this was Assistant Treasurer Collector. Now it's Payroll Manager. Payroll Manager function was, has always been in the Assistant Treasurer's position description. So, I'm just saying, I don't think the title is, should be the three, since the payroll manager is incorporated with all the responsibilities of payroll as Assistant Treasurer.
Okay.
Just a comment.
Do you know why that's, that has changed?
I do, so the manager was trying to better incorporate the payroll duties, rather than just kind of bury it in the body of the description. They were kind of saying that this is a focus of this position.
We advertised, we were trying to attract somebody that had some experience. Really, we wanted to focus on the payrolls, we just threw that in there to, as a, as a little buzz.
And the range when we advertised was up to seventy-eight, if I'm correct?
We did the full range, so...
So I believe it did, so what we've been doing currently, we're trying to explore different posting options, because we're not getting many applicants. So we've been posting the starting range, which was one to three, and then we also post the full range.
We're struggling with that, you know, we just went through interviewing again for Executive Assistant to the TA, and pretty much everybody that we interviewed, they wanted top step in that. Other than that, it was just too low, so we started again to try to...
And I can tell you, I have another department who picked out four candidates out of eight. I made four phone calls and got one response back.
Yeah, it's a challenge out there.
Wow. And it was not a long time after the job closed, it was a couple of days.
We're working on that, that should, definitely should be a goal.
Okay.
The compensation plan.
All right, are we ready for a motion?
You ready? Move that the, you don't have anything, right? Move that the board vote to allow Alicia Nunley Benjamin, Finance Director, CFO, Town Accountant, to hire an internal candidate at step, grade ten, step five, for the position of Assistant Town Treasurer Collector Payroll Manager.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 It's five zero, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, minutes. The last item, I believe they're all correct and accurate, I didn't see any issues with them.
Move that the select board vote to approve the meeting minutes of April twenty-fifth...